I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. First on the agenda is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopf?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
Okay. Awesome. We have everybody here tonight. Next up on the agenda is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for the BATV recording. And anybody from the public will be using the single stand mic right in the middle of the room here. And then everybody that's on, phone call coming in, make sure you have your mic off and do not use speakerphone when you talk. Thank you.
Next up would be item number three, approve the minutes for July 14th and July 28th,
2020.
Second.
Motion by Chantet, second by Uer. Roll call.
Chantet?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Next up would be items to be removed, added or changed. Do we have anything this evening?
No, we don't.
Okay. As planned. Next up would be item number five, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody here from the public for anything not on the agenda tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on then to the consent agenda. I'll go to Chantet.
Your Honor, just one item, Resolution 20-96-R, authorizing the mayor to execute an intragovernmental agreement amendment with the Illinois Department of Transportation related to the maintenance of traffic control devices. And I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion by Chantet, second by Knopf. Roll call, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Knopf?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is item number seven, a presentation on the Mahoney Creek watershed study plan by H.R. Green. Andrea's gonna start us off here tonight.
So, tonight we have Logan Gilbertson from H.R. Green. They've been working with staff very well, Lori, myself, over the last few months, looking at the Mahoney Creek watershed, ranging from east of Kirk Road all the way down to the discharge point in the Fox River, walking the creek and looking at what could be done and everything. Do you get an educational webinar?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but being on the phone, I can barely hear anyone even speaking. Can someone please speak into a microphone?
Hello? Is that better?
There you go.
There it is.
Way better.
Okay, I will start over then, so everyone can hear. Tonight we have Logan Gilbertson from H.R. Green, here to do a presentation on the Mahoney Creek watershed. They've been working with staff over the last couple of months, looking at, all the way from the beginning of the creek, including the tributary on the east side of Kirk Road, all the way down to the discharge location at the Fox River, looking at erosion and all different types of water-associated things with movement as it goes through the watershed. So Steve Zimmerman also will be available for questions. He will not be presenting at the moment, though, but I'm gonna pass it over to Logan. And he did our presentation for the educational piece for the residents back last month in July. And so with that, here's Logan.
Thank you, Andrea. Can you all hear me all right? All right, thank you. Okay, so really quick, we have a lot to cover today. And I'll start off by going through what we're actually going to cover. We'll discuss the goals of the study, go into a very brief history of Mahoney Creek, discuss the stream assessment that Steve and I did. We also completed a residential survey as part of this stream assessment, go through a few of the high priority projects that were identified, funding mechanisms, and then we'll save question and answer for the end. So the goals of this study were to assess the current condition of the creek, then to identify potential ways to improve the creek itself, then go through and identify which areas really needed the most, you know, high priority improvements. And lastly, we were going to identify funding sources, grants and things like that. So we'll start right into the history of Mahoney Creek. And when I say history, we're going way back. This is back to 1840. So these are really the first bits of information that we have as engineers and ecologists to look back at what the environment was like before humans really interacted with it. So back in 1840, this shows the Fox River there. It identified, you see the mouse right here. We also see Mahoney Creek, oh, sorry about that. Mahoney Creek is this black squiggly line here. And you also see that Batavia is not really a city yet. We also see that the area was identified as timber in the red box there. So what this means is that it was a savanna woodland type of ecosystem. This is likely what the area would have looked like before settlers came in and started to manipulate the landscape. You may be asking, why does this matter? Today, everything has changed quite a bit. So the reason we go back and look at this type of stuff is because if we are doing an ecological restoration or any type of stream stabilization, it helps to know what nature would have done without human interactions. The next bit of data that we have comes from our 1939 aerials provided by the State of Illinois. So you see, a lot of things have changed between 1840 and basically 100 years later. The building that we're in today is here now. A lot of the city of Batavia has shown up. We also have, the Mahoney Creek Tributary is now visible. It wasn't mapped in the 1840 maps. That doesn't mean it wasn't there, but there is a good chance that it was not as large as it is today. You also note that a lot of the area that was called out as timber is now open agricultural field. These black areas here, these are likely still remnant oak savannas. And this little parcel right here is Shanahan Grove Park, which still today exists and has some of those trees that were called out in the 1840 maps. So what do we have today? The stream has been changed quite a bit. We now have a totally different stream alignment in many locations. That orange squiggly line on there, that is what it was in 1939, and the blue line is what it is today. So you can see, actually, in a few spots, there are houses where the creek used to be, and the creek was straightened in many locations likely to assist with development. Now overall, Mahoney Creek and its tributary drained about two square miles, 1,300 acres. The watershed, the area that drains into the creek, that means everything that is within that black boundary, any drop of rain that falls in there, if it doesn't soak into the ground, is going to work its way to the stream eventually. Now, it's mostly made up of residential area bounded by Kirk and Wilson. As you get upstream of Wilson, you have a lot of industrial areas. And then we have the Fermilab property that is mostly open space with native vegetation there. So, a lot has really changed since 1840. To summarize things, is that as everything has developed, we've increased the amount of impervious area. There are more roads, buildings, and that results in less water soaking into the ground. It also results in more water flowing into the creek than it originally had handled, you know, 140 years ago. We also have gone through lots of construction in the watershed, to obviously build everything here. There are now detention basins there. These were installed to help mitigate the effects of paving, so they store water and release it slowly. But what that has done is it also increases the amount of time that water is flowing through Mahoney Creek. So it changes the hydrology of the channel. And lastly, much of the watershed is cultivated with the most common crop in Chicagoland, and that's turf grass. So with turf grass, people like to have it weed-free and looking green. It comes with a lot of fertilizer and herbicides. So, what are the findings of our stream assessment? We went through and broke the stream down into 17 reaches. A reach is a segment of the creek that has a similar characteristic to it. It might have similar vegetation on the banks, it could be similar level of erosion, or just a similar cross-section, meaning the shape is of the stream is a U or it's kind of trapezoid. But every single reach along there, Steve and myself walked through it and gave them a rating. That was me. And then the ratings were assigned to give us an idea of areas that actually need improvements. Now, this exhibit up here just depicts what condition these stream banks are in. So everything in red is considered a severely eroded stream bank. The yellow is moderately eroded, green is minor erosion. We are recommending that severe erosion and moderate erosion are items that really could be addressed, could be improved upon. Typically, minor erosion is something that's maybe less than a foot high or so. It's not in need of immediate address, uh, being addressed. Sorry, I'm doing this off of memory, but the severe erosion was, I believe, 13% of the overall channel length. Moderate was about 47%, and the minor was about 40%. So when you consider the health of the whole watershed, there was quite a bit on the severe to moderate erosion side. Additionally, we looked at the riparian area. This is where Steve really comes in, because the riparian area is the area just outside of the stream itself. This is the woods that are there, the, you know, prairie, if there is any, or in some cases, turf grass. It's basically the buffer along the creek. And Steve was able to give them each a rating as healthy, degraded, or sadly, the riparian area along the creek was all in a degraded or poor state. We have a few photos here from our assessment. So we did note lots of locations where there were debris jams, as depicted in that first picture in the top left. That's actually a bunch of trees and yard waste that have built up in the Route 25 culvert. We also identified locations that had very severe erosion in the top center picture. That bank is approximately 16 feet high, actively eroding, and there are cars parked at the top of it. We also identified locations in the bottom left picture there where residents are losing their private property, or they're actually encroaching into the creek trying to regain We found a few spots where infrastructure was in need of repair, as depicted in the top left picture there, and this is something that Andrea has already begun to address. We identified lots of locations where turf grass was going right up to the edge of the stream, as in the top right picture. So this may look really nice and pretty and clean. However, turf grass is not the best way to stabilize a stream bank, and we'll discuss that a little bit more in detail in a moment. Also identified lots of trees that are being undercut. So there is actually erosion occurring, is leaving the roots exposed, and after we receive storms like we did yesterday, it can very easily push a tree like this or this into the stream and cause more problems. But it's not all doom and gloom. We did see plenty of very healthy portions of the creek. The top left picture there is Reach 2, just downstream of Manchester. This area, there's exposed bedrock, and that means the creek's not going anywhere. It's solid. We had Woodland Hills Park, it was recently restored. We also had all of Reach 8, which extends from forest to Shanahan Grove Park. The residents in this area have been doing an extraordinary job maintaining their stream bank. So funny that you were here today. Thank you. All right. One thing Andrea had mentioned is that due to us all wearing masks in the ongoing pandemic, we were unable to do a full open house to gain input from all the residents who live in the watershed. So in lieu of doing that, a survey was mailed out to 442 residents who live within the watershed. Of that 442, we had 68 respond. They're all depicted on this map in green. And of them, a third of the residents who lived along the waterway itself actually responded. We're gonna go into their responses a little bit here in a moment. But this survey was sent out in advance of doing a webinar. We wanted to understand what everyone's concerns were with the creek, gather any ideas that residents had, and then from there, tailor our educational piece in open house, online open house, to match what people were interested in. So we'll go into four of those questions that we asked them. The first one was, what are your concerns with your individual property, your home, you know, how it interacts with the creek? I highlighted the four most common responses up there in orange. They're flooding, creek erosion, wildlife habitat, and trees. So looking at these things, you can really kind of see that, you know, three of them are geared mostly towards things that are kind of related to the health of the stream, the erosion, wildlife habitat, and trees. These are things that people normally want in a healthy waterway. We also then asked, as a whole watershed, the creek entirely, what are your concerns with that? And again, we came back getting responses that lended, lended me to think that most of the concerns are actually with the health of the stream, rather than making sure it is just a wide-open channel to let flood flows through. People want to see a healthy, thriving ecosystem along the stream. Their most common answers up there all indicate that they're concerned with habitat and water quality, in my opinion. All right, one of our other questions was, in your opinion, what do you see as negatively impacting the stream? Now, this is very important, because what I see on a couple days walking through the creek may be different from someone who's lived there for 40 years. And overwhelmingly, the two causes that everyone is assuming is causing a negative impact relate to overgrown vegetation and debris. When I see these, and when I saw the creek, I would agree with them. So the overgrown vegetation that is along the stream is the degraded riparian area that Steve and I identified. Much of that is dominated by invasive species. These invasive species can lead to stream erosion, which undercuts them, as was pictured a few slides back, and then allows trees to fall into the creek, leading to debris jams. So these two things are tied together, and they matched very closely with what we had seen. And then one of the last questions we asked, which made me pretty happy to see the results of, was what is your opinion of Mahoney Creek? Do you like it, or is this a nuisance that we should try to pipe through all the way to the Fox River? That's not going to happen. But overall, we had a very resounding, yes, we like this stream. So that was a good thing to see. All right. So remember, part of this study was to go through and identify things that could be done to improve the waterway. So I want to share a few examples of what a stream restoration, what a riparian restoration actually could look like within this watershed. So up here, we have a before and after photo of a Flint Creek in Barrington. The picture on the left could very easily be Mahoney Creek. It's a relatively narrow stream, about 10 feet in the average in most spots, and the banks are relatively steep with a lot of overgrown, mostly invasive vegetation. So what an ecological contractor can do on a project like this is they come in, they do selective tree clearing and brush removal. They get rid of all the invasive stuff that we don't want in the riparian area anymore. You can grade the stream banks back so that they are not straight up anymore, pull them back to a more gradual slope, restore it with native vegetation, and this will really help create a more stable stream geometry. Here's another example of a stream restoration that was done. Actually, Steve and I worked on this together. And in my opinion, this looks very much so like what could be done in Reach 11 of Mahoney Creek. And Reach 11 is the Johnson Woods Reach, just downstream of Wilson. So this stream used to be in very similar condition to Mahoney Creek is today, and this was improved upon two years ago. This is a picture from one year ago, though. This is last year's picture, I believe. But you can see, after one year, you're getting quite a bit of vegetation coming up, and it is looking more like a natural kind of thing you would like to see in your backyard. And one thing that was used on this is something called a two-stage channel design. Sorry about that. So what that means is that rather than just having a creek that is shaped with eroded, nearly vertical sides, when you have a flood and you have conditions like that, the creek gets deeper and deeper and has to go faster and faster to keep moving that water. If you grade back the stream banks so that they have this little bench right here, this is called a floodplain bench, and then a more gradual slope on top of that, you can pass flood flows without having to move the water so quickly. You're able to have your open channel in the middle, but then anytime it spills out of the channel itself, it's able to slow down, soak in a little bit, and not cause such high velocities that lead to the erosion we're witnessing. And lastly, I wanted to give an example of a woodland restoration. This is another project that was completed by AES, our partner on this job. And picture on the left there looks very much like Shanahan Grove Park. What was done to restore that woodland is you go in, you do selective tree clearing, remove all of the non-native invasive brush, which is basically blocking your view in that left picture, and restore it to an open woodland savanna. You can restore the forest floor with plants that are meant to be here. And what this also does is allow sun to actually get down to the soil again. So you can have plants growing on the ground, rather than exposed soil, which is susceptible to erosion. And I have said multiple times through here, native vegetation, native vegetation. I would like to touch on why that is actually so important. This is an exhibit that many of you may have seen in the past. I believe this is from the NRCS. But what this cross-section shows is all, well, not all of them, many native plants from Illinois' prairies. And then on the left here, this little spot is turf grass. It gets to be about 2 to 4 inches high, root system maybe goes that deep into the ground. So that means that when you have a drought, its roots are the first ones to dry up. All of these native plants, they have root systems that go multiple feet into the ground, so they can handle a period of drought. Another thing that these native plants do very well is they help infiltrate water into the soil. What that means is that when rain falls on the ground and you have a stand of native prairie plants, you have more water soaking in to the ground and not going to the creek. If you have large fields of turf grass, a lot of that water runs off to the creek and can actually contribute to flooding and erosion. Two more things that native plants do really well: hold the soil in place. Those roots are basically a big matrix grid that help keep everything in place and not let it get washed away. They also anchor themselves to the soil when you have water flowing over them, and that it will actually protect the ground surface from getting the full brunt of flows as water is passing by. So just briefly, that is why native vegetation is very important to have along a waterway. And one of our other objectives of this project was to identify projects that could be implemented. We had to come up with a prioritization plan. But that prioritization plan consisted of just getting the high priority projects. These are actually listed in no particular order, but they all have a good need to be completed. So these were chosen based on a few categories. They were either in terrible condition, they needed addressing pretty quickly. They were easily accessible, meaning they were on property that was either owned by the city or park district or in open space. And a lot of them were actually, have a very good chance of gaining grant funding. So those were some of the things that went into identifying these projects above all others. I'll briefly go into each one of these six. I will go rather quickly, but this presentation will be posted online. So Project 1 is located in Michael Wild Park. And we have a few of the statistics up here about the project, but I would like to actually show an exhibit and just speak to that. So the first item here is to explain how flow is going through Michael Wild Park currently. This blue line, the dark blue, is the Mahoney Creek Tributary, is flowing from the southwest to the, or southeast to the northwest in this picture. And this red dash line here is actually flowing entirely through a storm sewer pipe. So that is called a piped stream. Very creative, right? One of the things that we are proposing to do there is to daylight that stream. And daylighting a creek is what it sounds like. It is restoring it back to an open channel. This has a few benefits. It's more ecologically sound, and it also reduces flooding that is occurring in the park. Right now, the flooding is mostly nuisance, in that the pipe cannot carry the full flow. It's flowing over the trail and causing erosion. One other thing to note about Michael Wild Park is that there is a flow control structure right here. That means that Michael Wild Park is meant to actually flood. So currently, pretty much the entire park is turf grass. We are proposing to restore much of the park to a native prairie condition. It does not need to be in this angular engineering look here. It can be very nice and flowy and natural-looking. But we wanted to definitely maintain some of the characteristics of turf grass. You know, the park is used for soccer right now and lots of other sports and activities. We didn't want to take all that away. But to benefit the watershed, doing a native restoration through much of the park, doing some selective tree clearing in this northwest corner of the park, and then restoring the stream banks immediately downstream of the flow control structure would all greatly benefit this area. Again, this is owned by the Batavia Park District, so it's predominantly one owner that we need to be coordinated with. All right, Project Number 2 is referred to as the Kirk Road Detention Expansion. I'll, again, go to an exhibit and we'll speak over that. So north is to the right in this exhibit, but this is actually an existing detention area. This is the headwaters of the Mahoney Creek Tributary. And right here, at the front of the culvert, there is a designed wall that is meant to back up flow onto the Fermilab property. This is providing stormwater detention there. Now, in 2018, the city had funded a study to determine if more detention could be provided in this green area or in this red area. That study was completed, and it determined four different options for providing additional storage here. They range from 3 acre feet to 13 acre feet. And for an idea of how big an acre foot is, it is 1 acre by 1 foot deep, is a measure of volume, and when you're measuring stormwater volume, you tend to need something that's rather large. So one of the things that this study did was come up with grading plans, but it did not align the proposed release rate to what that means to the stream if it leaves there. So one of the things that we were proposing to do is to take that existing study and determine, based on the four options, which level the city should really go with. Because you could provide a really big, big detention cell up there, but it might only provide the same level of benefit downstream as one that's half the size. So I feel like this one needs to have a little bit more design to it. However, putting detention in this area has a benefit that could be an ecological benefit as well. When you're designing a large detention area like this, you have the opportunity to install micro pools and small wetlands and actually create habitat, matching some of the things that the residents wanted to see along the watershed. So in this project, we could kill two birds with one stone. You get the ecological benefit, but you could also have a flood control benefit to it as well. All right, our third project that we had identified is from Radent Road to Shanahan Grove. This is on all of our exhibits referred to as Reach 9 of Mahoney Creek. And again, I will go through to the map of the exhibit. So this portion of the stream as well, Radent Road is right here, Hanson and Cleveland up here, Shanahan Grove Park is right here. This portion of the stream also has a buried stream running next to it. This is a pretty unique condition, because Mahoney Creek is actually an open channel here, but a portion of it is piped next to it. I have a theory as to why this happened, but we believe that this would be best off if we could just daylight the whole creek. It's actually a less sewer that needs to be maintained by the city, and it would be more ecologically friendly. Another thing that's being proposed through this area is that we want to install a couple riffles here. Riffles are little rock structures that help control the grade of the stream. One reason that this reach in particular could benefit from them is that, if you remember that 1939 aerial, the creek here used to meander pretty wildly. It used to come up right through this house, all the way up to Cleveland, come down. That means it was a long stream. It had a nice gentle slope to it. When you straighten it out, you inherently make it steeper, and that means the water's gonna be going faster through here. These riffles will help to control that grade and create controlled points for the water to drop. We also are proposing to do that selective tree clearing, maintain all the desirable trees in Shanahan Grove Park, and do invasive shrub and brush removal through here. Try to do that woodland savanna restoration that we depicted in the photo earlier. Also, the stream upstream of Shanahan Grove Park could use a little bit of a riparian buffer restoration. Currently, there is one there, but it could be expanded upon a little bit there. There's an existing easement on the creek here. However, the city does not own the creek in this portion. It should be noted that actually the city does not own a majority of the creek itself. It is maintained on private property, park district property. And there are certain easements in there that allow maintenance to occur if necessary, if a very large tree falls in or something of that nature. But in general, it's the residents' property to maintain. But in general, it's the residents' property to maintain. Mahoney Creek Reach 11. If you remember, I mentioned that this is currently in the worst condition of all the reaches. Steve can attest to this. When we were walking through there, it was so dense with buckthorn, a native, or non-native shrub, that we tried to walk through the creek. And the creek was so full of debris that we could barely walk through there. So this one gave us the biggest headache getting through there. Now, this, this reach is just downstream of Wilson right here. And it runs all the way through to a flow control structure that is just in the, just off of Radent here. This property is owned primarily by the Johnson Woods HOA. There's also a few private properties along Radent, and these parcels up here off of Wilson that are stakeholders in this. So this reach is entirely severely eroded and moderately eroded, and the riparian area is in very poor condition. So what we are proposing here is to do stream bank stabilization along the entire length of the creek, to do a couple riffles in here, but then also do pretty heavy brush management through here. That means remove all of that non-native shrub and then go through and take out a lot of the trees as well. One thing that was identified on this is, it could be a benefit actually to the HOA and some of the stakeholders, is since this is a big open area, and it would be opened up even more if the trees are removed and you can see the creek, this poses the opportunity to actually have potentially some type of path back there for the residents. You know, it can be an educational piece and actually an example for how other reaches could be improved upon in the watershed. We have two more to go here. Our Reach One, this is the last stream reach before it goes into the Fox River. This is just downstream of River Road Route 25. And this is the portion that I had shown in those photos where the stream bank is about 16 feet and straight up and down. That runs from right around here along this western, or the southern bank, basically to the end of this property. So that is in the worst condition of any of the banks along the creek. This is why it became a very high priority project here. So obviously, we'd be proposing to fix that, but there are a few other items in this reach that were pretty unique. Down right around here, before we get to this meander, there is a debris jam that has occurred. It has been identified for removal. I don't know if it has been fully removed or not, but it has been there for quite some time. It is large enough that it is actually creating a grade drop, meaning the stream bank upstream of the jam and downstream has multiple feet difference on it. So much so that it is starting to push the creek straight across the property here and create a new channel. So we'd be proposing to obviously remove the jam, but then restore it with some type of grade control structure there. It could be one large run of rock through there, it could be multiple steps. But one thing that is really nice about this location is we have the Fox River Trail right here. So any work that is done on Reach One would be visible from the trail. So it would be, you know, an educational piece again for residents who are coming through the area. All right, and the last one is Mahoney Creek Reach Five. This is just upstream of Pine. So this creek, this stretch of the creek is pretty typical. It had a lot of moderate and severe erosion. One thing that made it rather unique is that the riparian area is very wide. There are no homes that are immediately abutting the creek here, so it gives the opportunity to really get a nice riparian restoration through here. When we did our assessment, the property owner here had actually told us that she was working on removing invasive brush on her own. The job was a little, probably larger than a single person could do on their own, but she was, you know, doing her best to maintain the stream through here. So we also have just general recommendations for the stream as a whole. In this exhibit here, all the black boxes that are identified, those are the high priority projects. And then everything else in there was what I had shown previously as the different levels of erosion. The high priority projects, as I mentioned, have a good likelihood of being constructed. They have a high constructability. They have high grant probability, and some of them just need to be fixed sooner rather than later. But the rest of the stream should not be ignored. You know, stream bank restorations can be broken down into smaller stretches. We do not need to do an entire thousand-foot stretch at one time. You could chunk it out and make it more of an ongoing program. The riparian area restoration too. So this is something that obviously has a quicker benefit if large portions are done at once. However, there are residents currently in Reach Three here, and as I mentioned, in Reach Eight, that have already undertaken this on their own individual properties. And doing work on your own individual property bit by bit, if you had all your neighbors involved, it can make a very big difference. It's like saving your change at the end of the day. Eventually, you're going to have $100. If everyone contributes a little bit, it's going to help quite a bit. So overall, let's sum up our general recommendations here. Remove any invasive species, if possible, on your property or have coordinated efforts by the city. Plant native vegetation where possible. And also, if you don't live directly on the creek, residents can actually incorporate this on their properties and it still helps the creek. As long as they're within the watershed, remember the water from their lot makes its way there. If you can reduce the amount of water leaving your property, you're helping the creek. We're also recommending to, in general, do stabilization of the moderate and severely eroded banks. And we also have a cost summary down here. This cost summary is included in our report as a reach-by-reach summary, but we also have it broken down by only doing the six high priority projects. And the cost for those six high priority, on the low end, was about 2.8 million, up to 3.5 million on the high end of the estimate. These estimates, I should say, also include the design permitting and construction of the actual project itself. All right, so those are pretty big numbers. How can we help to fund projects of this nature? As I mentioned, many of these are on private property or are owned by private entities other than the city. So that means that coordination is something that would be key in achieving any of these projects. The city has the option to actually help to coordinate some of these things. A lot of these projects, such as regrading a stream bank, they are, I will say, probably beyond the scope of what a single individual resident can do. The permitting alone to do a stream bank stabilization can run in the thousands of dollars, just in fees to review agencies. One other thing to consider is that if you have a property lined down the middle of the creek, you don't really want president on the, or a resident on one side doing this big restoration, changing the slope of the channel, and then the one on the other side leaving it eroded. You would like to try to get a cohesive plan on here. A way to pay for these, in the past, we have recommended the use of special service areas so that way residents who are benefiting the most from it are the ones who are contributing to it. I also mentioned that grant funding is very common for projects that are improving water quality. I was actually trying to think if I've done a project in the past five years that did not have some form of grant funding and was a restoration job, and I couldn't think of one. Steve, I think you could attest that, yeah, most of them do receive some form of grant funding. We've also done projects that use TIF funding to incorporate into a project. As, as I mentioned, a lot of these can actually benefit flooding in the area, so therefore they can be used in, you know, improving the economics of an area. Lastly, fee-in lieu is a way that we have funded these in the past. Fee-in lieu is where a developer pays a fee rather than doing stormwater detention or some other item that's required by the storm, King County Stormwater Ordinance. So hypothetically, you have a developer down by the river where detention isn't going to make that big of a difference, they can contribute to a fund, use that money to benefit the headwaters of the stream. So with that, I believe we are ready for questions, if there are any.
Does anybody on the council have any questions? Nick?
Hey, one, um, one of those things, the Redant and Shanahan area, if you go to that, yeah, you had mentioned that a section of that has underground, and you had a theory as to why that is, but you didn't touch on to what that theory was.
So, yeah, there is, there is a sewer that leaves Hanson here. It runs down, and it's my opinion that the reason that it was buried was that the sewer probably came in under the creek. And you can lay sewer pipe flatter than the stream likely was, so eventually they caught up with one another. And in order to do that, it's my opinion, they probably had to run all the way down here to the flow control structure. But if you're doing the stream channel stabilization through there, you have the option to actually drop the channel a little bit to intercept the sewer right here where it's coming out. Now, that way, that 315 feet of pipe doesn't need to house the creek anymore.
Would you, would you remove it, or?
Yes, you'd likely remove it. And one thing, you know, when we were doing the stream assessment, something that was noted was that every single reach had fish in it, except for upstream of Michael Wild Park, because there's 280 feet of pipe there that they would need to swim through. So, you know, these sections of pipe, granted, this one has a channel next to it, they are an inhibitor to wildlife from moving through. I mean, individual roadway culverts can actually see a pretty big disconnect with habitat and wildlife from one side to the other. And this one has a channel next to it, but, you know, any way you can bring the creek back to its more natural form, the better.
Thank you. Abby?
I have two questions. My first one, I listened to your webinar with the residents as well, so I appreciate all the work you put into communicating this back out there, but I had to leave before the very end. Did they have any, what was asked by them? What were they still thinking about and concerned of?
So there, there were a lot of questions about, kind of related to actually how they could benefit the creek. There were some that were individual to, my backyard receives flow from XYZ. We did mention that, you know, for an individual to actually go through and do restoration on their property, there are resources that could be reached out to. Andrea had mentioned, there are, I think, what were they, webinars that were done by the Conservation Foundation? So the city is currently doing some educational pieces, but it's just, you know, bringing people's attention to them. We did note a few sources of information they could reach out to. And our PowerPoint also had lists of native plants that do well in the sun, do well in the shade, native trees that can be used. We also had, there were two flyers in there for doing rain barrels and rain gardens. All of those are posted on the website now.
And then, from your experience, what can we do to best position ourselves to receive the grants to do some of this work? Is there coalition building? I mean, I know there's a Friends of the Mahoney Creek group that's already, you know, communicating. You know, what, what other things can we start working on to make ourselves look better for grants?
So one of the grants that is frequently used on these is called the IAPA's 319 Fund. So the 319 Fund, it comes about every year, August 1st is when they do a call for projects. There are quite a few portions of this stream that I think would be competitive for that. The one thing that is keeping us from being very competitive is that to really have a good chance of getting any money out of them, you need to be listed in an IAPA-approved watershed-based plan. So this was a stream assessment to look directly at the creek, but to have your project called out saying, "Look at this report that was done. It specifically says Shanahan Grove Park should be stabilized. We want to stabilize it." That really increases your odds of getting funding. That grant is a 60-40 split where the city or other stakeholders would have to come up with 40%. 60% is paid for by the EPA. It's from the federal EPA through the state. And that money can actually be used for the design as well, so it's not only for construction. There is also another grant that recently came out called the Green Infrastructure Grant Opportunity, GIGO. The due date on that, I think, is escaping me, but I believe it's coming back again next year. What was it? Okay, so coming up, a week or so. But that's another grant opportunity that can be used not just for green infrastructure, but for projects that are actually benefiting flood control as well.
Dan?
So you just answered almost all my questions, including the funding aspect of it, so that number I saw was a little scary when I saw, you know, 6, $8 million. But if we spent the time to do the type of study that we need to do, we, we did a similar type of study with Mill Creek, didn't we? Where we identified sections of, of the creek where there were substantial areas that needed to be replaced?
I believe, I believe because there is a water supply.
Yeah.
Approved by the EPA.
So what I'm saying is, it's not that we've never done it before. We have done it before, and we just need to place, place a priority on it. So first, with Shanahan Grove, if you find any Legos or Mussulmans, those are mine from the early 80s. I used to swim in that area, so I'm happy to clear those out and get those back if you need assistance with that. But what, what's the cost of waiting? What if we do nothing? How much worse is this going to, is this going to get?
So the, the areas that were identified as minor erosion, they're, they're roughly in the equilibrium right now. The amount of sediment that's washing away is approximately being replaced by sediment that's coming from upstream. You know, that's what channel waterways do, is they, they move soil. The goal is that the soil coming in matches soil going out, so therefore you don't really see a difference. When you get an imbalance is when you start seeing these moderate and severe erosion occurring. Cost of waiting could mean that, you know, more stream bank erodes, you have more trees fall in. Those trees could hypothetically block a culvert. You know, and then someone's property could get damaged, or the creek actually floods the house. You know, a lot of the flooding that was reported mostly was of roadways, yards. There were people who definitely noted that their back, their basements received water in them. But, you know, flooding was one of the concerns of the residents. And to me, that'd be one of the things to kind of worry about, is that...
I also have, the residents have reached out. We have one resident that lives on Johnson Woods Drive, Johnson Woods subdivision. They have a retaining wall right just south of Wilson Street. That is their private property, and it's something with the HOA, so that wall is being undermined because it's at a point where the creek kind of hits a kind of a sharp curve. And then there's all the houses that are on Mahoney Creek Tributary by Woodland Hills to the east, and that was one of the pictures Logan had showed where there's objects in the back of the yard that, once those do get taken down by the water as it passes through there, it, they're going to lose that land and they might not be able to replace it.
And that's, that's an important point, if I remember that from previous studies. You can't go back and put this land back. You can't put rocks down there in the soil. Once it's gone, it's gone.
It's gone.
Correct. Mahoney Creek itself is a designated floodway, so that means that if it's, yeah, if it's gone, it's gone. You're not supposed to place any fill within a floodway.
That's probably the biggest factor. If you wait, it's how much more land is going to be taken away that you cannot replace.
And then, last question, I promise, was there any reaction to the concept of an SSA? Any reaction to people throwing in a couple, $3,000, $4,000 to improve their own properties if it meant that they could fix property? I know one was $100,000 that they put into their own property, but...
Right, that was the one that's on martial court. Those homeowners have since moved, but they did invest that on their own property. When Logan did the presentation to the residents, it was more of an educational piece. He left out all the projects. He was still working on this portion, and it was briefly mentioned that a majority of the creek is owned by homeowners, but funding options had not been mentioned. We waited to bring that before the council to kind of get direction from you. I know we were looking at this project at the beginning, just trying to figure out scope and costs, and so this is kind of just our findings. And obviously, anything moving forward, we would need further direction. I know we have other projects as well that are seeking attention and funding, but that's why we're here, just to give everyone an understanding of what is out there and responsibilities, whether it be the city to help organize, to help prepare funds, grants, and the opportunities to preserve that and enhance the natural area again.
Thanks. Mark?
I'm assuming if we chunk this out and not do it all at the same time, my assumption is you start all the way upstream, but are there some that you would just say, I think you were saying like Reach One was just so bad because of, right near the, all that? Is it, do you lose a benefit by saying, okay, you start there, but then it might take a few years to continue to do everything, and then now that's in just as bad a shape as it was before?
So we have, we have done these larger watershed-based plan of attack type of things where we started in the middle just because that's the way to look at it. Hypothetically, there was a utility project that needed to go on that was adjacent to the creek that, you know, all right, the project that was six years from now is now happening today. So it doesn't necessarily hurt anything. One thing to consider is that as you're doing these, changing the channel shape, you need to be cautious of how that affects hydraulics. So you don't want to go through and create, you know, things that are going to negatively impact everything downstream. So it does pay to just say, oh... So, it does pay to just say, "Okay, we're doing a, a reach in the middle," but have a serious thought about how it's going to impact everything as a whole. You know, a, a stream is all tied together. I mean, it's literally the product of the area draining to it. You know, if this stream were entirely urbanized, where it's 100% industrial area, it might be in way, way worse condition than it is today. You know, I, the residents along here, having a lot of open space, it's helping quite a bit to not have all that pavement coming down. But, yeah, to answer your question, it doesn't hurt, but you need to really think through the way you're doing it.
So, I know a lot of the residents from Ward 1 were on the call, and they actually live by Wilde Park. And the biggest concern from them is, as we continue to get these large storms, the roadway floods. I went down when we got one of the large storms and stood there. I couldn't find the grate to clear it out. And so, that is a big concern. I watched cars go through, and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, your car's going to flood out." But there is concern that there is some danger with roadways flooding around that area, especially with Project One that he identified on that.
So, to touch on that really quickly, I remember one of the residents had noted their flow comes north on Viking, and when it goes around the corner on Hanson, it misses the grate and continues down the street.
Yeah.
Or it can pond there. So, one of the things that we identified was, you know, you, we can actually, since we're going to be doing earthwork in the area, disturbing the soil, you can purposely grate in a point where it will overflow into the park and not flood the roadway. You know, if that grate there gets clogged, you can let it straighten at the park there. So, that way, it's not continuing on down the road and contributing to flooding on a storm sewer that might not really want that flow. Keep in mind, Michael Wilde Park is designed to flood, the park itself, but you're correct. Doing a project in the area, you would want to try to rope in those other concerns that residents have, to say, "While we're here, let's fix this and this and this." I know, well, I saw it today when I was driving here. I know exactly what you're talking about. There's a little dip there. But, I mean, when we did the stream assessment, I think the two separate occasions when I was out there, maybe six months apart, I saw barricades at the entrance to the storm sewer that flows through the park. It was all muddy and eroded, and you could tell the path there gets flow going right over it. So, things like that are items that would be addressed in here. This study is kind of high-level concept, you know, just, it needs four acres of restoration type of thing, but built into that is some fluff for addressing utility impacts and things like that.
Mike?
So, what, what effect does Fermilab have on that? Because that's kind of at the head of...
Yep.
...the, the tributary. Does it have a negative effect?
So, one thing that's actually kind of helping with Fermilab is that all of their property that drains into Mahoney Creek's tributary goes through a, a restrictor at Kirk Road. So, there is some existing detention there. Also, much of their property that is draining to us there is mostly prairie right now. You know, it's open space, so you don't have a lot of pavement coming through. I believe the, the watershed tributary to Kirk Road, there was about 80 acres. So, their contribution is that there's 80 acres of land coming to it. Their use of it right now probably couldn't be any better, but they are still contributing, you know, there's flow leaving their property. Adding detention there, as I mentioned, needs to be just fine-tuned to make sure you're doing it efficiently.
And part of the, the city owns an easement over there, or we hold an easement for Fermilab, and on the east side, there is a restrictor over there, but unfortunately, all of Kirk Road from Wilson Street to Pine Street, it's about a mile length, flows into Kirk Road directly into the creek, so it's unrestricted. And part of the project would be to route that water, stormwater, into the detention basin on the east side of Kirk Road and hold it behind that restrictor. So, then, when you're having these heavy rainfalls, it's four to five lanes of asphalt, completely impervious pavement just dumping into the creek. So, that's what we've been looking at, and obviously, yes, there's prairie there that Fermi has, and it is wet when you drive by after heavy rainfalls. But this would help kind of retain some of that water, whether it be on one or two ponds on the east side, or on the west side, we could also, the city owns that parcel that's highlighted in Rose Hollow subdivision. So, that was what the study was, to see how much volume and where we can retain that water.
Yeah, that was, I guess a point I was going to make is, because Gary Holman and I have been speaking about that for a couple of years now, is that, you know, Kirk Road is, is what's flooding that area east of Woodland Hills.
Yeah.
And then, then it goes through that culvert and hops over to culvert and was washing away the road at Woodland Hills Park even. I mean, it's, it's really a strong current. And so, I'm, I know we're looking into doing something with that. There's a lot of people downstream have been, been pretty upset with that. Back to Fermilab, it's reassuring that you say that they have good land, that, that they're not using any chemicals or anything in their prairie or anything that could possibly be washing downstream?
So, the prairie is currently in good condition. Typically, a prairie that is that healthy-looking, I would say, Steve, you're, you're more the ecologist, but I would assume spot herbicide treatment would be occurring in there?
And it's well-established, I think, much of that going on. I don't know that they've burned that area.
Yeah.
They do a controlled burn there.
Yeah. It's been bandaged as a prairie, but I don't think there's really any insurance coming off of, so putting off the land.
Okay. Oh, that's it. Thank you.
You okay? Okay. Abby?
Has the Park District been contacted about naturalizing Michael Wilde Park or the, the clearings at Shanahan?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Not yet.
Gary has had some conversations recently with the Park District regarding Michael Wilde Park, and I know they've come out and done some clearings. I've had conversations with the Park District about restoring the creek to its natural estate, and they are supportive of that, because every time it rains, that is an eight-inch pipe, and it gets clogged real easily, and the water overtops, and it's a maintenance nightmare for them, because then they have to go out, the path is blocked. So, they are actually pretty excited about the fact that they can get a quote-unquote "bridge" over that creek and still utilize the park. So, for that portion, yes, they are, have been made aware and are on board.
So, just another question, I guess about funding. I didn't quite understand, are these grants, are they for the homeowners? Because I just, I just don't see, you know, with, with the cost that you, you put up there, homeowners, it, on, on either side of that, however many there are, I mean, they're half-acre lots, so they're not many, maybe 10 homeowners.
Yeah.
So, if it's a million dollars and it's 10 homeowners to split a million dollars, that's considerable money.
Correct.
And so, I don't see the homeowners doing anything, to, to be quite frank.
Yeah.
And so, I would think, you know, municipality, the government's going to have to be involved somehow in, in ascertaining grants.
Correct.
I mean, would you agree with that?
I, I would agree with you. Some of these grants are of the size that even the application is probably beyond what a few homeowners could do. One thing, though, is to just keep in mind that, you know, as we're doing this study, we want to just let everybody know that these properties are not owned by the city. If the city chooses to facilitate helping with design and things like that, you know, it's, it's something you could do. But we wanted to just make it clear that, you know, you're not obligated to. However, some of these projects are beyond the scope of what a resident could really undertake on their own. That, that was the point of, of kind of going through the funding and mentioning that you don't have to take these on yourself. However, they're big projects. So, your, your point is very valid.
And so, and so, now, with, there's you, there's an easement running through...
Yep.
...all of this, and so, there's, there's no culpability for that easement. And then, there's, there's no ownership of that easement, except to say, "We have an easement here, but we don't have to contribute towards that," is what the city would say, right, or any kind of government agency. How about the, the, the utilities? I mean, I believe they have poles, poles and standards along the creek, just about in, in the wa, well, they are in the water when, when it's flooding, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, on Reach Three, they definitely are.
So, you know, possibly even running under the creek, you know, and so, they have no, I guess, no skin in that game either. They just have the utility and, and that's it. So, it's left to the homeowners, even with that.
In my opinion, they, they would be the stakeholder that should be involved in it.
Right.
You know, I, that's kind of why I, I try to refer to everybody as a stakeholder, rather than just sticking it all on the homeowners, because it is probably, in the city's best opinion, or best option here, would be to help in some way with these. Whether if it's a bunch of residents getting together and clearing invasive brush, in my opinion, that's something that residents could do on their own. But like I said, if you're doing, you know, regrading of the banks, where you have an excavator coming in and you're spending a million dollars, that's something that's a bit beyond what an individual resident has. And many of these projects do have a benefit to the greater good. You know, there, there are a lot of spots where you have a lot of area draining through your property. You know, so maintaining an open channel through there benefits many people. So, this is where we're saying that, you know, an SSA for the watershed could actually be a good idea to help fund these, rather than putting it all on the city individually.
Right. And then, maybe we can talk to some of the owners to say, you know, kind of list, ask the city for some assistance in, in getting grants. I mean, that's, they're, they're better equipped to do that than a homeowner.
Yes. And there, there are, at, at your option, you could help to facilitate grants, to, you know, be the one who applies for it and manages it.
Just really quick, Logan, if you go to that Barrington slide, because that was a project I was involved in, gosh, almost 15 years ago. The Village of Barrington got a 319 grant through a watershed plan that they had in place, and there were, I think, 15 or 20 homeowners along each side that chipped in, I think, about 5,000 apiece to help with the match, and then the village paid the remainder. That's the, yeah, what Logan's got up there. That's how that one was funded.
And that would work.
The EPA paid 60%, and then the other 40% was split between the homeowners and the village.
Yeah. So, there, there are lots of options here.
Creative ways.
Yes. Yeah, but I, I agree with you. I think recommending a million-dollar project to 10 homeowners is a little, you know, over...
Right, over the top.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I guess that's the direction the staff is looking for, because if we want to apply for the 319 grant, there needs to be some work done. Obviously, August 1st has gone for this year or next year's grant, but if we want to apply for the next year's grant, we need to do what Logan suggested, which is do that overall watershed study, get it in the IAPA-approved plan, and at that point, we apply for the grant. If we, if we are successful, we get the 60%, then we can talk about how we pay for the other 40%, whether it's city and, and, and some residents or whichever reach it is, we can, we can discuss it at that point. I think that's the direction we are really looking for. Staff thinks that, you know, Gary, myself, and Andrea, we, we like doing the detention upstream of Fermilab. We think that detaining some of those undetained water will provide good benefit to most of the creek, as the water will be slowed down and then released slowly. So, that's a project that we'd like to actually proceed forward with if, if council agrees with, and then also, at the same time, look for opportunity or, or prepare for the 319 grant, apply for all that.
And that, and that's, Rahat, that is the, the water on Kirk Road, diverting that to Fermilab, and then adding to the restrictor somehow to, to hold that water, to slow down the flow of it.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, we, we can, obviously, not tonight, but we can talk about that for sure at, at a COW meeting sometime in the future.
I would like to see that come back from, you know, engineering to come back and tell us what they think that's going to cost us to get to that point and what kind of schedule we would be on to try to, to move that forward, because I think that's something we've dealt with, and anything we can do to slow down the water on that section of that creek, I think, is the best thing we should be looking at.
And regarding that project individually, too, there are two existing studies that could be utilized to help...
To aid in that, put that stuff together.
Yep.
Yeah, because I think we, we have to be ready for that if that's where we decide to go.
Should we also know the cost of the watershed study?
Use the mic.
Should we also know the cost of the watershed study, too, or think about moving?
Yeah, so, so we write watershed plans. We've, we've done over in this area, and, did you say this was a two-square-mile watershed?
Yes.
So, it's really small compared to the ones we usually do, and what, what Logan has already done here is a big chunk of the watershed plan. So, usually, they're in the 70,000 to 100,000 range, but this one, because of the work that's already done, is probably in the 50,000 range. But you can also get a 319 grant to pay for the watershed plan. So, 60% of that, so you're only paying 20,000 if you get that grant out of pocket, essentially. And usually, that 20,000 is split between the municipality and other stakeholders in the watershed.
Kind of like the utilities.
Or the Park District.
Park Districts.
Because they have a lot of the property that benefits from this.
Yeah, Fermilab could be a stakeholder in this, is a, you know, major property holder. One thing to note, though, is, as Steve mentioned, the studies, you can apply for a grant to do the study itself. However, if this is more of a pressing issue, so hypothetically, if we're going to apply for a grant next August in 2021, you would find out if you got the grant in 2022, have all the paperwork done in the fall of 2022, and probably have your watershed plan in 2023. So, you know, if you rely on grant funding, sometimes you need to really think it through is, if getting the grant for the study is waiting the time, if that's something that you would like to do, then you proceed that way. However, if you're more concerned with getting the grants for construction, it may be in your best interest to push on the study, go ahead and just pay for that one, and then use that study to get more construction dollars, is, you know, one way to look at it.
I want to chime in, too, because the 319 grant program, it has been slam dumped for a while.
Yeah.
I mean, we, so, we, we put some watershed plans together, and I think between what I've done and you've done, and we've done together, probably in the last five years, we've probably got $5 million worth of 319 grant money...
Yeah.
...to do stream restoration projects, specifically, just like what Logan's pointing out.
Yeah.
Like, probably in the 90% success rate, we are getting...
Yeah, I, I actually, I recently did it, and it was 80-plus percent. But it is, it is not uncommon for a 319 grant to be over a million dollars. We're currently doing one in St. Charles, just north of here, that I believe our total grant amount was close to $2 million.
Okay. Who else? Thank you?
I thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Figure out what our next step is.
Okay, well, now move on to item number eight, which is ordinance 20-45, major amendment to a planned development overlay for one Washington Place mixed-use development, 111 to 133 East Wilson Street and 20 North River Street, one North Washington LLC applicant. Alderman Serone?
Yes, this is the second amendment to the original, due to having to go get a new TIF and whatnot, and the changes we've requested. So, this is gone already to the Plan Commission and has come to us with a recommendation after a deep discussion, and I assume there will be some here tonight, and also went through the historical preservation. The same concerns that we, we've had all along have presented themselves, so we can talk through some of that. You know, building size being excessive, losing parking, increased traffic, a lot of the same things have been, were presented to Historic Preservation and to the Plan Commission, but still, they both came out of both with recommendations. So, I don't see, Joel, I assume, Laura, you'll, if there's anything you want to add before we start talking about this?
Actually, Joel is on the line.
Oh, he's on?
Yeah, so, Joel will present this, and then also, Joel, just to let you know, I've given you screen control as well, so if you have anything that you want to show from your computer, you can just click on "Show My Screen."
Okay, I, I don't have anything to share, but I can, it's a brief, that the Plan Commission did a summary, and held a public hearing or the virtual, held a virtual meeting in July 2021. held a virtual meeting on July 4th. It was kind of zyland. A couple weeks ago, the COW began establishing a replacement district. That process has begun. And in April, they passed both 1 Washington LLC, amended to the COW, and amended 1 Washington Place sign. Amended this sign would restore the commercial frontage to Wilson Street. Excuse me, I'm having a little trouble here with, it would restore the commercial frontage to Wilson Street, would also add off space of River Street commercial frontage, and it would reduce the number of volume and the parking. Ordinance in front of you tonight includes the changes that were presented to the COW in April and also presented to the Plan Commission in July. And at that hearing, both citizens spoke and four emails from citizen's record speaker and the emails addressed several concerns, as Alderman Saron pointed out. Just a moment ago, the Plan Commission was more supportive of changes, most notably the return of the Wilson Street commercial frontage. Both commercial commissioners didn't like the parking reduction, but the Larson Becker parking lot was identified as providing parking for the COW. The Plan Commission arrived at positive findings for four of the five design. The findings related to safe and efficient delivery of public services received a three-to-three tie vote. That finding. The Commission approved, finally, by a vote of six to zero with one commissioner absent, and by a vote of six zero, again with one commissioner absent, the Commission recommended City Council approval of a major amendment to the One Washington Place Plan overhaul that was approved, or that was previously amended by Commissioner Dash. And that approval included the 25.
Joel? Joel?
Yes?
You're breaking up quite a bit here. We're having trouble hearing you.
Sorry. Well, I, there's not a whole lot I can do. I, I'm not sure what the issue is with the phone, but, uh, let's see.
It's sounding better now.
Right, talk slower.
Yeah.
With the option that council would approve and then develop treatment and replacement system, I'll recommend.
Yeah, Joel, Joel, we're only getting about half of what you're saying. So I don't know if it's the phone or connection or what it is, but it's just not coming through.
Joel, are you calling, are you calling in on the phone? Are you on the, go to meeting?
No, I'm not using the audio in GoToMeeting.
Okay.
I am on a phone connection. I don't know. Uh, yeah, I'm, my phone's muted. I'm going to go to meeting, so. Well, the COW or the COW approved the ordinance that presented it or consider amendments to the ordinance. And COW action would allow for this ordinance, well, and develop a lively amendment to be considered with the other, the residents and related to this. And staff recommends approval for 45 as presented.
So basically, he's presenting the information about the alternatives that are up on the screen right now, that we wanted to present the information to you tonight in an order in which if this is not acceptable, then we need not move on to the next step. And so the very first step is to look at what the Plan Commission, Historic Preservation Commission have looked at and recommended for approval to City Council of the redesign of this project, both from, you know, with the purview of historic preservation, looking at the facade and determining that it is of a nature that would be complimentary to our downtown. And then also Plan Commission, looking at these changes and determining whether they fit within the five criteria that Plan Commission looks at. And I think you heard that Joel said that they approved four out of the five.
Can you just, for the public, review the one that was not approved?
I, I can, um, the one, the one finding that failed to get a majority of yeses was, I'm looking for that, was the finding that really, um, the project design provides for safe and efficient provision of public services. The, the, the Plan Commission did not really discuss that. They just arrived at a three-to-three vote.
You better explain that.
The only thing that I garnered from what I read and what I saw was that they didn't like the parking loss, and that's where they figured it was a detriment to services, was the fact that there was 30 parking spaces less.
Right. And that the reduction in the parking spaces, I'd like to just take a look at that. Where we're at is a result, it's about 18 spaces less, as you can see from the 351 to the 333. And where that happens is in adding that commercial space back in on East Wilson Street. In order to get the appropriate ceiling height for those spaces to be commercially viable, you lose that row of parking that exists in the lower level of the parking garage. So that was sort of what the trade-off was. Does that make sense to everybody?
And that's, and that's the putting in the commercial, the retail back in.
Right, right.
That the council asked for.
Yes. Previously, that had been taken out and replaced with four residential units that were walkout.
There's, you know, just to start the conversation, because I don't know what the chicken or the egg with all these things that we're going to be discussing tonight. I feel like we've kind of backed ourselves in a corner. We asked for more retail, but it's cost us. And I think there should be discussion. And I don't feel that we need to be, no, we asked for it, so we're stuck with it. Well, we could always go back to the prior, you know, plan, because to get that retail and, A, we lose parking, lose a couple residential places. The developer has expressed concern of renting those places out. So he's asking for incentives because he's not confident that we'll get it. So while it's great to want more retail, in today's environment, the environment's changed dramatically in the last several years since this has started. We have a, an ideal of more retail, but it's coming at quite a price. And then to, I would not be for agreeing to any incentive above what we're giving here for retail, because I don't think it's fair to our existing retailers out there. There's already a lot of vacancy. So I don't know what conversation comes first. You know, agreeing to this and then getting to the RDA and talking about that? But these are all topics. I just feel I don't, I don't think we should pin ourselves into the third. We can go back to the second plan if the cost of more retail is more than we think we want to take on. Dan?
I guess I would just, I would bring up, it is frustrating, the number of meetings we've had, we've had on this subject. We've gone back and forth on some issues. Our priorities have changed over time. In my opinion, I felt like there was a major change when we peeled the retail off. We lost a lot of votes after that iteration, and there was some concern. I remember raising my hand and saying, I really feel like if we're going to look at this plan again, retail needs to come back. The character of the neighborhood, having the, having the retail space in the front, having the people who live upstairs, being able to go downstairs to shop at some of those places. I don't feel like we're backed into a corner. I feel like we pointed to the corner and walked towards it. This is where we want it to be. So if we don't want to be there anymore, then yeah, let's have that discussion. And I also reject the fact that we can't fill these spaces. There are 18 retailers across, or however many across the street, or, you know, we got all these boardwalk shops looking for spaces. These retail shops are tiny. They're very tiny. I don't think we're going to have a problem filling them. I recognize in some of the other things that we might be discussing later, if this passes, that there'll be a request for some sales tax rebates. I don't even think that those will be necessary. I don't, based on the type of retail that's going to go in there. So after reading everything this weekend, I'm still in the same place as I was before. I'm absolutely for this. I'd like it to move to the next place. I do not need to discuss this project anymore. I pointed to the corner, I walked towards it, I'm in this corner.
I appreciate that. I'm just saying, because we pointed to it, we pointed to it not knowing the costs of it. So now, you know, it's great to go to a car dealership and say, no, that's what I want. And then when you hear the cost, you say, okay, maybe that's not what I want.
Yeah, it's not like we asked for a radio and they like ripped the whole thing out. I mean, it's not, it's not substantial. The number of spaces that left are not, are not substantial to me.
I would say we knew what the cost was. We, I mean, we were told pretty clearly that we're going to lose parking. It was either going to be apartments that go and give us retail, and then we lose parking. I mean, we knew we were going to lose parking. So when people say, well, we lost parking, I keep thinking, but we were told that. We were told that by Dave Patzelt, told that by Chris Aiston. We knew. And I personally, I was opposed to putting the retail back in. I thought we have enough empty spaces in our downtown today that if we bring this to fruition, that those spaces will be filled. And I think if you build it, people will come, retail will come and follow, that we didn't have to bring retail into that building. But, you know, that's a vote I lost, and I was good with it, you know. But I think we fully knew that we were going to lose parking. I mean, it was pretty clear. Anybody else want to, Dave, go ahead?
Dave Patzelt, for the record, David Patzelt, One Washington Place LLC, Shodin Organization, 77 North First Street, Geneva, Illinois. I'm a little bit shocked about your comment this evening, but I probably shouldn't be. I was going to start off my presentation, whenever the chicken or the egg came up here, to say that we, I believe that we have listened to your request, which was to get the retail back onto Wilson Street. So that's why I'm a little bit shocked. But I'm hearing what you're saying, and you're asking, you want the fellow council members and commissioners to look at the cost. And I think this is an excellent slide here, but one thing that I was mentioning to Laura and the other staff members today is we missed something very clearly that we should have put on this slide. And I think Laura tried to present it, and let me try to walk you through it slower. If you look at the column that says 2017, winter of 2017, and you look at the total number of units that are in the building, that's 186. If you look at the April 2020, we're at 186. So believe it or not, there's been no change in units in that period of time. Now let's go to the retail square footage, the total. In 2017, we had 14,590 square feet. What do we have in April of 2020? 14,180. To me, the 300-ish square feet, that's, that's the same. Let's move down to the, and I purposely skipped the office space, but let's go to the parking. When you look at the 2017, you'll see there's 367 spaces in 2017, and today, there's 350 spaces. That's the 17 spaces that I think, or I know that Laura was trying to describe, but is really, I think what you're saying is the cost. Now, what cost? That's one of the elements, is that parking. This presentation slide is a little bit misleading perhaps, in that you see that minus 32 spaces. Really, that minus 32 spaces is from where we were at in 2018, not where we were in 2017. So our cost there is the loss of that 17, 17 spaces. However, let's jump back up to the office space. We picked up 2,370 square feet of office because we had zero. And I think that is another win that I believe that I had mentioned it once before, that we actually found some office space. How do you find some office space? Worked it into the plan. And I, I recall there were a lot of grins or excitements about bringing office space to River Street. So I think that's a major win or coup there that we picked up. Again, what is the cost still, that parking space? Yes, there's another cost, which is the unknown. Are we going to get the tenants? And that's really that, you know, build it and they will come. Okay, we're in. We're partners. We're in. We're going to build it. We heard you were, want to do what you've asked, which is get that retail. And we found the commercial space, but will they come? And I know there's confidence in this room that they will come, but some things have changed between when we started working on this plan, and that's why we're all sitting here with masks on tonight. But we may need to have some incentive to get those tenants to come. Will they all be retail tenants? I don't know. Will they be restaurateurs? I hope so. So that's the unknown, and I don't think you want, and we certainly don't want to have vacant space down there. So trying to put that out there for everybody to understand that we may have to have another incentive, which is that sales, the sales tax rebate. So I think your cost is the loss of the 17 parking spaces and a potential sales tax rebate. But what was your gain? One was the ask of bringing back the retail, and the other, you know, hooray, was some additional office space. So hopefully, that helps everybody look at what is the cost when you've asked them to see what is the cost.
Yeah, no, thank you. And I only, I bring it up because we've been here for four years, and we've seen the iterations. I don't want us to be in a position where we're jamming this through just because we're tired of talking about it. And we're at a point where now there is another ask for incentives, and that's another cost to us, or, you know, that's a debate right there, whether it's, you know, tax rebate or whatnot. But we've given incentive, incentive, incentive. At some point, I wish you had more confidence to say, oh, it's a no-brainer for retail. But if it's not, if you stand there not that confident, then should we be that confident? And it's hard for me to, you know, tell existing businesses, no, we're going to, we're going to give them incentive to move to those places, but you as a landowner here that have vacancies, what are we going to do for you?
Also, keep in mind on that incentive, that as part of our package that we had submitted to the financial consultants, our rents are probably, or I know, our rents are the highest rents in the downtown.
Right.
So fellow neighbor tenant, your rent is lower, you may not be getting a sales tax incentive. Conversely, if you're in One Washington Place, you are going to pay a higher rent, but you may be getting a sales tax rebate, if we needed to attract them, so.
Right. And that's my, that's exactly my concern, to even the playing field, to say, well, wait, why would it be the same for, let's say, I'm a prospective business. I get this brand-new shiny.
Building or space.
Retail space that I would love. Because of the incentive, it competes with the existing stuff that's been around here 100 years. It's an unfair advantage against our existing landowners. It's an unfair advantage against our existing landowners, you know. So it's just a concern that I have, and another cost for us.
So one of the things that I would say is that sales tax rebates come up in other discussions that prospective businesses who are working with other property owners in the downtown come in proposing as part of being able to incentivize that project for happening. So it wouldn't be something that would be unique to this project.
Oh, absolutely not, yeah. But I think it's just, I just thought it was worth discussing.
Absolutely.
One last win. I can tell you that, I know it was at Historic Preservation, they appreciated it, and I think Plan Commission was excited about it, and that was the revised elevation on River Street. So we have Don McKay virtually online, if you would like to walk through the changes to the, I'll call it the facades, or the building elevations. So architecturally, you can see the changes, but if they were all included in your packet, if you don't need to see those or understand those, we don't need to have Don do the presentation. But I thought if that may help anybody understand.
I think that would be good, to get back out to the public again, so they can forget the block of cheese.
Dan?
I'm not writing you a check for sales tax. I'm writing it to the retailer.
To the retail, yes.
And I'm glad that you brought up that we've done these before. We gave them to Walmart.
Right.
Or we gave a really big one to Walmart. So it's not like this would be the first time we ever done this before. I don't think you will need one. I think people will be clawing at the doors to get in.
I appreciate that, and I hope so.
I really do.
Nick?
Sure.
I've always thought that regardless of whether we put retail in here or not from the start, if there wasn't the retail there, and it was demanded by the public that move into that building or in the downtown, we would find other places to build the retail. So I'm not worried that if we were to pull that out, like you talk about, that we wouldn't find retail somewhere else, or another new building for retail. So I'm kind of, either way, I'm okay with it. I think, you know, the biggest thing to me to reiterate in this is that we went in knowing we wanted some type of parking structure there. The only way to get something that we wanted was build a big building that could generate enough in the TIF to be able to help incentivize this parking garage. So that's what the city went in starting for. That's what we still have. We've got retail back that a lot of people wanted back, you know, that that was a detriment to the project when that changed and went over to, you know, the other four units. So that's something that I am okay with. I think, you know, a lot of the misconceptions and a lot of stuff's been flying lately on, you know, social media, is that people still don't understand this project. They still think that the parking garage is coming out of River Street. They still don't understand that it's four floors of residential, two floors of parking, and now almost twice the amount of retail space in it.
And sometimes I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding of what we're trying to do is ordinarily, a public parking asset that generates no revenue. Will we charge for the overnight parking passes $30 a month? Sure. But that's just going to cover our maintenance cost. From a property tax standpoint, the property tax coming off that is zero. Today, the property tax coming off of all of the parcels included in this redevelopment site is only $6,000 to be shared by all of the taxing districts. This is a strategy whereby we can have a public asset that ordinarily wouldn't generate any revenue whatsoever, and we can put $1 million of increment on top of that parking structure that would have been generating $0 in revenue. And when we're able to generate that additional increment, $1 million to be shared by all of the taxing bodies, that helps every single property taxpayer in the city of Batavia. And this is why you see this in numerous municipalities throughout the Chicagoland area, where they don't have any more space to create new subdivisions. You know, they're, and they're facing the same cost increases for services year after year. And this is a way where a city can generate significant revenue. It makes downtown more lively by having more people who live in your downtown. It attracts new businesses, because 186 apartments is going to bring a lot of people who will need a lot of things, and they'd probably like to have it within walking distance from where they live. And so one of the suggestions that I've seen on Facebook is, "Why not sell this property to the Park District for $10?" Because that would generate zero revenue. And that's really the issue, is we're looking to our future and trying to make an investment in something that's going to generate revenue for our future, and in the short term, be a really great economic incentive for our downtown.
And if we sold it to the Park District, or the School District, or any other government entity, it would just cost us more in tax money, because they would build something on it, and then we'd have to maintain that and pay.
Right, right.
Your Honor?
Yeah, I just want to kind of second what Laura just said. I've had the opportunity in my many years here to see some other towns do this, and specifically Elmhurst, Downers Grove, Wheaton, and Western Springs. And I've had the opportunity to talk to the, probably most of them are now former mayors of those towns when these projects were done. And every one of them, 201s, tells me that when they were first started in their town, there was minch of the same conversation, and reasons why not, and opposition to it, for the exact same reasons I've heard in Batavia. It was just the same conversation. "Oh, this is going to be the ruination. Nobody's going to want to live there. It's going to kill the downtown, et cetera, et cetera." And 201, everybody says, one of the best things they've ever done, it's brought all these new residents into the downtown, who are right then and there to use the businesses, the restaurants, the services. You've just brought in a whole new cadre of people to do business in your town, and they're living right in your downtown with that business. And beyond that, the mayor of Elmhurst, a friend of mine tells, the former mayor, tells me that when, they've got a 12-story building sitting there in the middle of downtown Elmhurst, that's right fairly near the Metro train station there. And when that came in, you know, all hell broke loose. It was going to be the ruination of Elmhurst and everything else. And at the end of the day, the mayor tells me that the one thing that really came out was, is that at the time they did that, Elmhurst was pretty much built out. They didn't have cornfields or subdivisions where they could annex and bring in a whole bunch of new people to live in town. And as a result, many of the other governments in town, the School District, the Park District, Northern Library, everybody was starting to have, there was nothing more to tax. There was no new revenue. Suddenly, they bought this 12-story building in there, and they gave some incentives, but now that's rolling a lot of money into the pockets of those governments that is really helping the School District, and some of them carry the freight for York High School and New York School District. So, I mean, there's some very positive stories, if you go to the east of us, about this exact same trend that we, that's been presented here in Batavia.
Okay. Before I ask anybody else, I just want to clarify, I'm not trying to poo-poo this. For this overlay, I just want to make sure we're clear on going to iteration three from iteration two. There's variables involved that are different. There's pluses and minuses to each one. I think it's worth, and since we started this, and certainly in the very recent world, retail has changed dramatically, and, you know, it's a crazy time. So I just wanted to make that clear. Does anybody else want to add any comments or discussion to this?
Anybody up in the air?
Anybody on?
Michael?
Well, you know, just again, to what the mayor's point and Laura's point is, you know, every year, we sit and we discuss the budget, and we have lively discussions not to raise, trying to find revenue and not raise property tax, and let the EAV raise the property taxes. And this is a way to generate revenue. I mean, this is a game changer for our city. This will generate revenue where we don't have to raise property taxes. And, you know, all the things, I've been getting emails from people, and 201, they all miss that point. They all say, "We're going to be raising taxes on the people who live out, not in the downtown, but the people who live outside of the downtown in Batavia." And that's just categorically a falsehood. We're not raising taxes on anybody. The project will pay for itself.
Right. The taxing bodies will continue. They establish a base EAV level, and all of the taxing bodies continue to receive what they received if there was no project there at all.
Except the School District, they get money from this project.
Thank you.
They will get money out of this.
Yes.
Per student that's generated by this project.
Per student.
And that has to be said over and over again.
Yes.
Because that's what people feel, is that if any kids come out of this development, that the School District has to then tax the other citizens to be able to pay for this. That's not true. There is a formula that was changed several years ago in the Illinois State.
Right.
Legislature that makes the development have to contribute money for that.
That is correct.
Not all of it, but...
Up to 25% of the increments has to be made available for any school-aged children who are generated by the project. And we have written into the RDA that the developer is responsible for those costs, not the city.
Right. So I just want to make sure that people understand that the project will pay for itself. It will not come from our general fund. It will not come from property taxes. It pays for itself, and we will not be raising taxes to the general population, their property taxes.
Right.
This is a good thing for the city.
And I would propose that each of us do a little town hall meeting in your ward, and Mike and I have done it in the past, because the, it's clear, as much as we've done it, people don't understand the TIF and how this works, and they need as much explaining as we can provide, so.
I'd be happy to attend any of those meetings, if, just to explain.
Yeah.
What is a TIF and the mechanics of it.
Can I just say one last thing? And I don't mean to be mean-spirited, but, you know, people are listening out there to the wrong people. And there's some people opposed to the project for whatever reason, opposed to Shodin for whatever reason. I mean, I see David Patzelt at these meetings. I don't know David Patzelt, but he's always been a proper gentleman at the meetings. I think he gives us the truth. We've become partners with Shodin, but there are some people out there, and it's happened throughout the history of Batavia, my 12 years on the council, that there's misinformation and just basic lies that are out there, being told by people, and people who aren't following it closely enough are believing the misinformation, the half-truths, and we need to make sure people understand what the truth is.
Thank you. I would say two things to that. One is that the city has a whole webpage dedicated to everything about this project, from its very inception to, we'll add an update for what happened at the meeting this evening. And you can find that at the city's website. If you look under Departments and you see Economic Development, on the Economic Development page on the left-hand side is a link to One Washington Place. I'd also encourage you, if not me, Scott Buning, or Anthony Isom, if anybody has any questions, or they say, "Hey, you know, somebody told me this about the project," we'd be happy to let you know if that is accurate information, or to provide you, direct you in the right direction to accurate information.
Anybody on the phone want to chime in?
Nick?
Marty? Go ahead.
So we were just talking about understanding the TIF and getting it correctly. And the part that we are talking about with the tax dollars going for this project, to pay for this project, are true. But we also cannot then say that any tax generated from this is going to go to our budget. That will not occur until 23 years from now. So if we're talking about being truthful and understanding what a TIF means, we can't say that it's going to bring this windfall of money in to help us during budget time, because that is not correct.
Until after the developments are completed.
And that is 20 years from now. Not next year's budget, not this year's budget, not even 10 years. And the questions that we talk about with the School District...
Marty? We've got really bad feedback right now.
Do you happen to be on speakerphone, Marty?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
It was starting to get reverb, but when we're also talking about the School District, and the costs, and those factors, the School District weighed those, and they turned it down. So when we're talking about having honest conversations, just remember that a lot of us, I think all of us, want to see that developed with residential. The concern that we've had from residents, not random, these aren't random Facebook people, these are residents that are talking to us, they're saying they're concerned about the size. They're concerned about which, in the negative finding, number five, is the impact to city services and traffic in that area and parking. Those have been concerns throughout the community the entire time. That has been since five years now. So that hasn't changed, and that is still reflected in that vote, which is a 3-3 vote. And that is reflective of why I have, when I no longer thought this project in the best interests of our city, was in 2017. That's where I stand with it, and that's where I remain with it. And it doesn't mean that I'm listening to quote "the wrong people" or "don't understand it." I have a different view of the scope of this project. Slightly smaller one, not a problem. But we are looking at factors that have been out of our control for the last five years. Things that didn't exist five years ago when we were planning this exist today. And other things that we thought were home runs, I don't know if it's true anymore. So that's where I stand.
Okay. Anybody else on the phone?
Yeah, Alan, Tony here. Can you hear me?
Just barely.
I'm sorry, who's this? Tony?
This is Tony.
Yes, that's better.
Okay. Yeah, I would say, just a response to the matter.
Go back to your microphone, Tony.
How's that?
Better.
Okay. With regard to what the mayor said, with all due respect, all of those towns you listed have a railroad going through there. And we, I know we've discussed this in the past, but that's a significant difference. But when I got on council, this project was already being discussed, and one of the first votes I had taken was when it was, "We need $2 million more because there's bedrock." And it has just seemed there's been all of these things that have come up. Now, through all of this, this project's in the fourth ward, in my ward, through all of this, I have not heard one of my constituents in the fourth ward say, "Yes, this is, we should, we need to do this." Shows that I have an understanding of the project, but I have heard countless people that are opposed to it. I'm with Marty on this. The returns on it are pretty far out, and I would say the economy has changed right now for a project like this. So I don't know if you guys can still hear me, but that's where I'm at, and I'm not in support of it. Now, it's not to say I'm not in support of a TIF, but for this particular project, I'm not in support.
From staff's perspective, we wouldn't recommend establishing a new TIF without a project in hand. We've seen the types of things, how long it takes to put a project together, the types of things that might arise before construction begins, and therefore, we may not want to start that 23-year clock running, given the fact that a bond issuance is usually paid back over the course of 20 years. That three-year lead time to get to the shovel being in the ground is a good thing. And I would like to just point out that we have never, since we purchased the First Baptist Church, ever had someone come to us suggesting a... Church, ever had someone come to us suggesting a project for this property. We sent out an RFQ and to 24 different developers and we didn't receive one response. But Chris Aiston contacted Shodene and this was the, the proposal that we received, which is not to say that if this isn't the right proposal for us, we can say no, but I just want to set the expectations for how long it might take to have another developer interested in doing a similar project.
Okay, uh, is Drew or Elliot?
Yeah, Mike, this is Elliot.
Okay, Elliot.
Did you hear me?
I would say if, are you speaking on speakerphone?
Uh, no, I've got it pretty close to my face on, on my headset, right next to my phone.
That sounded much better. No feedback there.
Weird.
Don't move.
So I guess I'm, I'm, I'm going to echo kind of where, where I've heard a couple of points now. Um, you know, we, we've been through this for my entire duration on council, um, since I joined back in 2015, um, December. And I feel like every time we thought we had a plan, the plan had to change and the incentives had to change. And every time we thought we were getting closer and closer, then another obstacle came up. So I, I kind of, I would say scoff at the notion that we think we're through the final and, and this is going to be great and now it's good to go because we've seen over the course of the last four years that that's simply not the case and one more thing and one more thing and one more thing. And some of it is, in fairness, not a factor of the, the developer that, that is, you know, at the subject of this RDA, um, you know, but also some of it, I feel like we have simply missed signs early on and then created a problem that we had to then find some way to incentivize in order to make this profitable again. Um, I remember the discussions around the TIF. I remember the discussion, um, that the school board had around the TIF. And here we are again, talking about yet another way to incentivize to make this project once again viable, even beyond going up in the amount of TIF that we're making available, um, even beyond, you know, some of the setbacks that, that we've gone through and, and it's going to cost again more. And, and I simply cannot justify that. Do I like the project as it looks right now with retail back in? Yes. That's where I was originally, a yes. Now all of a sudden though, it's no longer the project at 14 million, it's 16 million and trying to get sales taxes back. And again, I just simply can't wrap my head around that. So I'm, I'm a firm no at this point.
Drew, are you on the line?
I am, yes.
Would you like to weigh in? I, I don't want to think you're forgotten.
Yeah, no, thank you. Um, I, I, I still support this project for all the reasons I've supported it in the past. I think if we want to see the downtown flourish, we need to create some density down there. And this is a project that certainly does it. Um, I've heard some comments that the market has changed a little bit. Uh, Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe one of the hottest segments going in the market right now is rental, is residential rental property. Um, one of the few things that's seen any kind of growth, um, which to me bodes well for this project to see it fill up and to bring that density to downtown. You know, we're, we're looking for retail. There's a lot of developable, developable retail right around there. Um, so it's got retail in it, it's got retail around it. Uh, that makes sense. And I also want to echo the mayor's comment, especially on Elmhurst. I have relatives that live there now. I was living there at the time that those projects were going in and, uh, yeah, I've seen what's happened to that, that downtown. It's gone from a sleepy little downtown to a very bustling, very vibrant place and I'd love to see that for Batavia. I think this project's a way to kickstart that.
So let me ask you, Drew, because you, you stated something, that the, the strength of, of the market is on residential rental. Uh, do you think iteration two or three, do you have a preference? Do you just want to move forward regardless? Um, do you think we should stick with more residential and, and limit the retail as we did last iteration? What are your thoughts there?
Um, I, I, I'm going to be wishy-washy on that and I, I, I supported it with the residential in the first place and I would support it that way again. Um, I think the project's important enough that, you know, if we end up with some variety of retail office space along, uh, along Wilson Street, they're all supportive of that. Um, you know, just based on the current, I'm way out of my lane here, the current, the real estate market, but it, it seems like that space would be able to be rented more easily as residential without us having to offer incentives to fill it. But I'll support it either way.
So, I mean, like I said originally, we've got a, a lot of items to discuss tonight and a lot of different things, but this one specifically is for the design plan.
Right.
And, and I'm not trying to go backwards. I, I don't even know, Dave, do you have a, a preference? Do you say like, shit, if you guys go back a step, I'm not, I'm out, I've had enough of this? Or do you think, you know what, we should go? Do you have a, an opinion?
Uh, I would say that, uh, a little ironic when I look at that chart and say where we were at in 2017 and yes, there have been hurdles that we've been trying to jump and issues trying to resolve and sure enough, we're just about back to where we were.
Right.
And let's stay, you know, let's stay consistent with that, with what is the 20, I'll call it the 2020 plan. Um, would be my recommendation, but I, I agree with, uh, with Drew that yes, the rental market is still a good market to be in. Uh, I think what I was sensing from his comments is that we all know that the retail market is not as good as it was three months ago or six months ago, but I, I think we are living in a different world and things are going to continue to change here over the next several months. So I am, I, I think from staff's perspective, and I agree with staff from just a land planning standpoint, that yeah, the retail looks nicer on, on Wilson Street. That makes sense. The ultimate question is could you fill it? And keeping our fingers crossed that yes, we believe we can, but also knowing that we may need some help to do that. And there's recommendation in the staff report, which was in essence, waiting six months to see if you need it. I, I think that's, that's, that's a good measure and I think that you're going to be actively involved, or staff will be, and whoever that tenant is. And depending on whether you, hate to say this, whether you want that type of tenant, uh, you may, you know, react a little bit differently each way in that kind of, that negotiation. But so I, uh, short answer is I think we stick with the 2020 plan that you have in front of you. Mainly historic preservation's felt the most positive that I've seen. Plan commission was very positive about it. I think there's the partnership you've, you've asked us to, to bring it back and we got it back. So I think we've got all the wants on the, on the table and it works. So, and, and I don't know whether, uh, the council members know this, but, uh, uh, we, we have obtained and have provided a, a letter of financing. So that's one of my concerns now is okay, now, now we've got a bank that, which is a, which is a good thing. And, uh, I, I, I don't want to wait too long before the bank says, no thanks, and then I got another hurdle to, to try to jump over. So, uh, that's a great position to be in.
I, I think we've got some reason for optimism about being able to fill those spaces on Wilson Street too, when we take a look at the success of Six Plus Cypress, um, Oak and Swine and Boca Ditos and the, uh, the way that they have even in the face of adversity these days, that they are among the businesses who are doing, um, as, as good as conditions could allow them to. But their businesses are continuing to survive this crisis because they got a lot of support in our community. And so that, that gives me hope that these smaller spaces on east of them will also, they'll see that as a good example of your business can thrive here too, especially with 186 apartments above it.
All right. Uh, is there anybody from the public or on call-in that would like to give their opinion? How do we do that, Laura? Yes, Marty?
Yeah, just real quick. I, I get what everybody's saying about where we are talking with this building and the bringing it downtown. For me, where this comes down to is when we say it worked in Wheaton, it worked in Western Springs, it worked in, uh, Elmhurst, et cetera, that for me is not comforting because everywhere is going a certain direction and there are less like us in Batavia. And when I envision things in Batavia, I, certain ideas that have been created just by visuals, the community dinner and the shops. When I brought those up, it was because I saw them and I said, God, I can just see those in our town and be a success. And lo and behold, they are. Because that's what I feel makes Batavia, Batavia. I don't want to be Elmhurst. I don't want to be Wheaton. I don't want to be those other places. I want to be us, standalone us, which is a dying breed because if everybody looks the same, then we're no longer the same.
It just comes down to future financial sustainability. We're looking at, for instance, video gaming coming back and that question coming back and that we, that's going to be revenue lost if we decide that we no longer want that. And we had a presentation earlier today about projects along Mahoney Creek and there are $8 million worth of projects on that list. And we need to be mindful that we're going to want to fund those in the future. And I know there are numerous comments that all of you receive about let's keep downtown looking exactly the way that it does today.
Laura, and I completely agree with you on that. I'm fully aware and I get it, but I don't want to lose our soul in the meantime. That's all I'm saying. It will come at a cost.
Right.
And what's that cost?
It's, it, that's fair.
Nick? Abby? Abby had a request and Mark next.
Are we just doing general comments right now or?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't want to jump ahead. But, um, um, I, I want to say, and to Marty's point too, about it, it looking like us and it not being Elmhurst, you know, obviously we, we still want economic resiliency and, um, I can say that I, I, you know, in my, in my circle, in my bubble, the people I represent, they get that and they want to see density downtown because they understand that point and they understand that that gets us the infill development that doesn't stretch us and it, they get it and they still are not super supportive of this based on the size and the scale and the fact that it doesn't fit within the character of our downtown. Um, and what I want to see, and I've been supportive of this project because it checks all the boxes for me personally, I want to see us get to the point that Dan's always talking about how, you know, unanimous votes are the best and slightly less than that are great. Um, and feeling like it's been such a struggle to get the community buying us and we've watched the fractures, you know, happen among our votes as well. Um, and I'm just curious, and this isn't, I'm not trying to take us too far back, but you know, what, what brings people, what would bring people forward? You know, what would turn a no vote to a yes vote here? And to Marty's point too, I think, I'm not going to speak for him, but the idea of having a windfall of cash in 10 years based on the development instead of 23 years would be a major boom. But to do that, we'd have to eliminate the TIF, we'd have to build it smaller, we'd have to build a private parking lot that only serves-
You'd have to find somebody to do it.
Finding somebody to do this. So if Shodene is not willing to do the, what was it, 1.25 parking spots per unit?
Um, the problem with the 1.25 spaces per unit is then it's a private parking and so there would be no, uh, way that we could contribute the TIF funding-
Right.
-to that because we can't fund private construction.
Exactly.
So you'd lose a big chunk of that project.
And would, you know, based on what the wants and the needs and what we've asked of this block, we've asked a lot of this block, you know, was there ever any consideration of, of letting it be a private large parking lot and eliminating the tax of funding and would we be supportive of that? And, and, uh, I'm losing my train of thought right now. Um, you know, to Nick, I know you've been concerned about the parking numbers and I'm concerned about the parking numbers and I'm concerned about how much money we're paying for the number of parking spots that we're getting. And I'm, and I am struggling a little bit with, with all of that. Um, so, and then I think the other, the other piece that I wanted to discuss tonight too, in terms of moving this forward, um, in, in the times that we're in right now, I'm feeling, like I mentioned in my email, a little extra protective of, a little extra protective of River Street and the existing businesses around there and wondering what kind of guarantees we can establish about construction and blockages and services and disruptions to the businesses that are happening there. Because I think disruptions can derail businesses on a normal, you know, construction disruptions can derail businesses in a normal time. I think when we're already in a very fragile spot and feeling like extra care and extra, um, real consideration and deliberate action ahead of time to say that there's going to be a communications committee that's established today that gets, you know, constant communication out to these businesses about what's going to be going on. Um, and some sort of a construction plan like we had when there was Wilson Street, you know, Wilson Street Bridge construction and, and what was done for the businesses downtown there. And without that, I, I just have even more pause to say, and, and this is going into a couple of years where we know staff is already strapped, budget's already going to be tight. How much more extra capacity do we have to absorb that kind of an initiative and endeavor and, and effectively communicate with these businesses and support them at a time when everything is going to be still unrolling from, from COVID?
I think we had a good track record with that frankly. You know, in 2016, after the initial RDA was signed, in 2017, as we established the community of all of the businesses that were in the area, we hosted several meetings in this room with multiple department heads throughout the organization. Thereafter, we set up, uh, once per week meetings on, uh, North River Street with all of the businesses that wanted to attend on a certain day at a certain time and we shared any and all new information with them. So we already have established that. What happened was the building wasn't getting built and so there was nothing new to communicate with them. Once we know that there's going to be a construction schedule, that we know at a date certain this is going to begin, we already have all of that information that we can then implement and start having those meetings in new. I think that, uh, I'm hoping that this project helps the future vitality of those businesses because I think for years, but for maybe, you know, El Taco Grande and Katrina Salon, I think it's been a real struggle for any of those other businesses on that street. And to have people who are steps away from their own home to be able to go there on a regular basis, I think that would be an incredible boon to them and we certainly will do everything in our power to, you know, protect their viability while this building is under construction as well.
Mark?
Yeah, this actually for me started before I was on council too. And, um, I've been on the fence the entire time because I, I appreciate the idea that we want this residential downtown, we want the extra retail downtown, what it's going to, it's going to change things for us in a, in a positive way. Um, I've struggled with the parking numbers the entire time because it, to park itself and then what's left over is less than what we have right now. And that, that ends up being a, a bit of an issue. Um, that whether true or not that we have a parking problem in, in Batavia based on different studies that we've done, that's, it's perception. We all know that parking is perception. Um, and the landscape has changed a lot. Yeah, we, we have an extra parking lot right now, but- Yeah, we, we have an extra parking lot right now, but the intent is for that to not always be a parking lot. The intent is to have, we expect multiple residential units to be built in downtown Batavia and raise that, the number of residents in Batavia that way. And that's why I think it's changed so much that I'm in favor of smaller scale. I know it's a four-story building on Washington, but it's six on River. You can't get past that. It's still six. If it wasn't six on River, it'd probably be more, it'd be something that people would embrace a little bit more. So if it was a smaller scale, maybe this is not an issue. But I think if you had more smaller scale, and I can think of three or four properties that are available now or will soon be available, that things would happen in those with more smaller scale properties that we would have around. So I'm just, I'm, I'm on the no side of the fence at this point in time with what's going on right now.
Mr. Paul Dernsrohn.
Ah, Michael. I think the first proposal we did for winter of 2017 with that RDA and that plan, I think it passed 13 to 1, didn't it? Okay. So then we had the changes. And to say that the public doesn't totally want this, we had a referendum on home rule in 2018 November. It passed considerably. So to say that there's nobody in support of this, that is not true. A lot of the complaints are, they're the first ones we hear. Construction, I think when the construction comes, a lot of businesses will thrive. I know restaurants, some downtown would love to see a construction because that's going to bring in a lot of new work, a lot of new people, a host to workers, and they're going to be spending money. So I made the point, I want a vibrant downtown. I think a majority of Batavia wants a vibrant downtown, and I think this is definitely an avenue to get there.
Well, we, we've got some new people first. Jennifer, go ahead.
To kind of go off of Michael's, where he was talking about, people want it. I think the people that don't want it, they don't understand it. They're getting misinformation and that's what's going out there. When we take a look at the parking, the parking doesn't bother me. We're losing 17 spots. But we also have to take a look at how things are changing. When you build something and you have the right amenities, people are going to stay close by. We have a grocery store where people can walk to the grocery store. I've toured a number of different developments and I've seen what's going on out there. And I saw somebody walking from a jewel with their bags about the same distance from Berkeley to their apartment building. People are going to do that. People will find ways to do it. People downtown Chicago, they do that. They walk their groceries home. So that's why for me, the parking and the parking spaces is not an issue. Anytime that anything comes up, parking is always an issue. I sometimes get to a point where I don't want to hear about parking issues because people want to say that there are issues and they really don't know and then there ends up not being an issue. I believe we talked about it even with the little shops being, parking being an issue. And it's not an issue on Saturdays. People just have to walk farther. But I think that this development is going to be the boost that our community needs. It's not going to be a windfall of money that we're going to get right away, but we are building for the future, the future of our community. And I think that's the important thing that we have to remember. It's not going to dig us out of a hole, but you always have to continue to build and to build for the future and to build for what we want in our community. And I think it's something that's going to be great for our community. I do have concerns with some of the construction. And as Abby said, you know, making sure that we keep River Street open and accessible. We may need to put building materials a little bit farther where they have to walk, but, you know, if we're going to have fewer parking spaces and ask maybe people to walk a little bit farther, then it begins right with construction. So I am still in support of this. I think it's something that our community needs. I think if people really understood all the components of a TIF and then also what goes into this development, that they may have a different view. But just getting your information off of social media and some of the misinformation that's out there has not helped the perception. And I think that's where a lot of people say that they are against it.
I think one of the misconceptions that I see out there is that we're getting $16 million in the bond issuance and we're giving $16 million to Chodene. And that simply is not true. The lion's share of all of that money is to build that public parking garage. It's going to cost at least $13 million to build the public parking garage. And then the soft costs associated with the private development are what will be reimbursed with the balance of those funds.
And remember that this needs, the public needs to hear this again and again and again. That money is not generated unless that building is built.
Right.
The city does not have $16 million or $20 million in a bank that's going to pay this developer back for building the parking garage and the cost. That's only generated by building the building.
We haven't heard Keenan. Did you want to chime in at all?
I do. I don't think I have a choice either. I, I, I've talked to several people and I have gone back and forth on this project. I, I think it is a, will be an economic driver for our downtown. I think the, the issue that people I have talked to and for myself is, is, is the, the size of the project. The character of it doesn't fit with downtown Batavia. I, again, I wasn't here from the beginning and I probably would have suggested something of lopping off the top two floors and moving them to the Larson Becker lot at this point, at this point. But for all of the benefits of during construction, it will feed all of the, these restaurants and these people downtown because that's what I did when I was a project manager. We, we went to all of the restaurants in the town. For, for all of the windfall of money that won't happen until 23 years from now will be amazing for all of us. You know, I, I look at just the, the, the changing of the, the character of, of the town, of what it's going to look like. It will be four stories above what is already over there. It's hard for me to, to look at. There are tons of people, people that I are also in construction and I talk to is, they, they know that downtown is going to be a place to be. And, and there are many places that this can happen, that all of these places can be developed. I, I just, I'm still, I'm still stuck on the look of it. I know it's going to be an amazing project for us for downtown. I just don't think the size of it fits our downtown.
Joe?
You know, I think I heard from the same people Tony heard from. And I don't go out on social media looking for people's opinions. I solicit them. I openly ask people to reach out and contact me and let me know what they think. Nothing I read over this weekend has changed my position. Nothing I've heard tonight has changed my position. In fact, some things I've heard tonight and the people that have reached out from the Fourth Ward have helped solidify my position. This is too big for our town. It doesn't say Batavia when you look at it. It says Chodene when you look at it. It's the same style, shape of every Chodene building in all the other towns. We need to say Batavia, not Chodene. I'm solidly against this.
Abby, you had one to add?
Yeah, I had a question and, and I apologize that it's like the new people that are like, it's so big. We just missed our opportunity to sit here and say that when it was the actual, when that was actually on the table. So, but that's still a thing for all of us.
There was a plan that had 12 townhouses and we said no to that.
I'd like to see that plan. What was my actual question? Oh, so I'm jumping ahead again, a couple agenda items. But to the RFQ comment that you made me, when you think of it, is, was the RFQ sent as a one, this is one parcel, you have to build on all of it? Was it subdivided? And have RFQs ever gone out on any of the other properties that are to be discussed in the TIF plan?
The answer to the second question is no. The First Baptist Church redevelopment site, I am not sure, and perhaps Dave could answer the question about which, and Chris Aiston is also on the line. I don't know which properties, I know the First Baptist Church and its associated parking lot were advertised to be the redevelopment site. I'm not sure whether the public parking deck, the former Freiden Dahl Building and the former Fisher property were also part of the RFQ. Chris, can you answer that question?
Yeah, I can. The RFQ included the properties, but there was a caveat that the city would commit to obtain those properties that it didn't already own. And so we, in order to provide the best opportunity for redevelopment, we included all the land that is presently part of the One Washington Place project. But we, we made very clear in the RFQ that there were some properties in this state, Freiden Hall, Fisher, I believe those are the only two, that we didn't have possession. We did not own them, that the city would undertake, you know, its authority to, to, to obtain those pieces. And it was not, it was not a secret that the property was in the TIF district and that the city could use its eminent domain authority in kind of nation of, you know, land. So the, the quick answer to your question is, Abby, is yes. All the land that's in OWP was made a part of the RFQ in terms of a redevelopment opportunity. And it is possible that some of the 24 recipients might have said, look, there's some risk here in terms of timing because they may have trouble getting that land. And so that might have caused some, you know, passation. And in fact, it did with Patzelt and Chodene Incorporated. They worried that the city wouldn't get the land, but you know, they thought they'd at least put pencil to paper. So, yeah, I believe we're talking apples and apples.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody from the public?
Is there anybody else that called in tonight?
Not from the public.
Okay.
We have on the line Don McKay, the architect for the project. So in case you wanted him to walk through any of those changes. And then we also have people from Kane McKenna, who performed the financial analysis of the project, which is more relevant to the RDA.
Well, without anything, I, I do want to remind everyone, this is strictly the design that came to us and we're recommending it to, to city council. There's still an RDA to get through and some issues, but as of now, for this ordinance 2045, did anybody want to make a motion?
Just for clarity's sake, this is as Dave Patzelt said, for 2020.
For the 2020, the new, as, as recommended by the planning commission and the historic preservation commission.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, motion approved. Alderman O'Brien and seconded by Alderman McFadden. Roll call, please.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
Uer?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf?
No.
Chantet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
And Wool?
Aye.
Motion carried eight to six.
All right.
Didn't have to break the tide tonight, did you?
Remember, he doesn't vote in panel meetings. I'll have to remind everybody again.
You know how I would have voted, so it's empty question.
Okay. I think that's the, the key to moving on with the rest of what we have here for tonight. Now, item number nine is ordinance 20-51, authorizing execution of the third amended and restated redevelopment agreement for One Washington Place. Alderman Chantet?
Thank you, Your Honor. So the, we also have a memo from Laura. If we are moving on with this, there were some updated numbers in there regarding return on equity, return on cost and whatnot. And the analysis did show that we still do have a reason to provide assistance for the, for the project to move forward. And last page leaves us with two things to discuss. The developer has offered to begin construction drawings immediately upon approval of the RDA as long as the costs are reimbursable in the event that we decide that we don't want this thing anymore. So this is a really critical moment. If we're telling the developer to go forward with what, a half million dollars in drawings, we better be sure he's going to build the thing that we just gave him authorization to, to do drawings for. And then we do need to discuss the, the sales tax abatement that we could possibly offer to future tenants at, at some time. Did I leave anything out?
No, that's fine. That's great.
I guess, does anyone have anything that they'd like to, like to talk about here?
I was trying to, I was trying to sketch out the full schedule of predict, you know, if this moves forward, then what's, what's the shovel and the, and the ground expected date?
So that really, huh, Susan, can you hear me? No.
Thank you. The one point about starting the architectural plans is really one of the critical components to the schedule. If, I understand the TIF, the creation of the TIF process, if that moves forward tonight, that between all of, scheduling out all of the various meetings that are required to finalize that TIF, it may not be created, approved until somewhere between late November and early January, depending on if there's any need to table a meeting, et cetera. So the thought is if we could get started now with architectural plans, we could be drawing over that three to four month period, which in essence would expedite us starting construction, would shovel in the ground the crack of, crack of spring. If we can't start those plans or don't start those plans until the TIF is approved, then that's going to push, if the TIF gets approved, let's say on January 1, it would then take the three, three to four months to get the plans drawn. Does that help you with the schedule? Trying to get to the microphone.
I know. I can't.
With you.
I can't see anybody on my side over there. I hope he was there.
What's, what's the approximate cost of, of the drawings all in?
So the estimated cost is about $400,000 to $500,000.
You don't want to front that if we say no?
That's, the concern is, do we want to put that investment out there? And then we, we really don't control the, the final vote, which the, the council would. Now, keep in mind that if through the process, you don't spend the $500,000 on day one, that, let's say that you're spending, you know, $100,000 to $200,000 a month over the course of those three to four months of doing the drawing. So in the event that something happened, let's say in month two, the exposure wouldn't be the full $500,000. It would be what dollars were spent by the architect to that point, as long as we picked up the phone and told them, stop, pencils down, stop drawing.
And if you cry uncle first, it's your fault. You're paying for the drawings.
Absolutely. If we, yeah, we would go ahead and start the plans and if something were to collapse on our side, we're not asking you, we eat the bill.
But this is a courtesy to help get that shovel in the ground faster. If we're, if we're truly in a partnership, then that's what you're asking for.
Exactly, yes. We just don't want the rug pulled out of us, out from underneath us, you know, during that three to four month process. We'd like to start the plans right away.
Right. And because of the complexity of the, the drawings, and I think Scott Buning could chime in, we're looking at like a six week review period for those drawings. Even we're going to attempt to obtain the Oswego drawings so that we can kind of get an idea.
If we, yeah, we would go ahead and start the plans, and if something were to collapse on our side, we're not asking you, we eat the bill.
But this is a courtesy to help get that shovel in the ground faster. If we're truly in a partnership, then that's what you're asking for.
Exactly, yes. We just don't want the rug pulled out of us, out from underneath us, you know, during that three to four month process. We'd like to start the plans right away.
Right. And because of the complexity of the drawings, and I think Scott Buning could chime in, we're looking at like a six week review period for those drawings. Even, we're going to attempt to obtain the Oswego drawings, so that we can kind of get an idea of the type of structures that we're looking at from, you know, electric and the different systems. But still, it will take likely a good six weeks to review the drawings between all the different departments.
Yeah, I would agree that that's, you know, an accurate timeframe for, you know, some initial reviews, you know, if there's back and forth and, you know, revisions necessary, there's going to be time added to that, but that's, that's obviously going to be the case. We don't know what codes Oswego uses, so, you know, their codes may be different than what ours are, so we'd be looking at it through fresh eyes, really.
Does anybody else have anything to say regarding greenlighting drawings if we are moving forward with this? Anybody on the phone?
Dan, question?
Sure.
What would a timeline be for last time that this could go away thereby being the responsibility of this city?
You mean like an off-ramp?
Yeah. When, when would the timing that, if we said, whatever timeline, said no, are we looking at three months from now, six months from now?
It potentially could be before the end of this meeting, because we have a step forward in establishing TIF number six is the next item on the agenda.
But when would a fail date be?
The, I'm going to let Chris Aiston chime in. There is, following the joint review board meeting, there is a public hearing, and following the public hearing, the city finally votes on an ordinance to establish the TIF. Is that correct, Chris?
That's correct. I guess, my thinking is that whether you approve the project or not, the builder is not going to build the building if there's no TIF in place.
Right.
So that's kind of like the last ball that drops. Now, this medium point where the builder will start drawing the plan, based on the RDA telling him that, "Look, you know, if the TIF doesn't go through, that's not on you, so we'll reimburse you on the plan," that seems like a good compromise, because that gets the plans going. But that doesn't guarantee that the TIF will be approved. At some point, the council has to adopt three ordinances, which include the plan, includes tax increment financing, and then finally includes establishing the TIF. So those can happen no earlier, I would guess, than Thanksgiving, or sometime in November, based on the way the statute lays out the next processes, which I will talk about when I present the redevelopment plan. But bottom line is, we know the builder won't build the project. If the TIF can't be done, because we won't lend them the $16 million, or reimburse them that, because we can't pay ourselves back, we won't have enough increment over the bond.
Right.
So you kind of back your way in, and you say, "If you need $16 million, we can't give it to you, because we don't have a TIF." And he's not going to build the building.
But if anybody was concerned about backing out now, if we, because we spent $2 million, at a later point, it could be $2.5 million.
Yeah.
I guess what you're talking about is the $2 million we spent in property acquisition and demolition?
Right, yeah, you're saying that it doesn't guarantee that the TIF's created, but if someone was worried about how much we've spent to this point, we're spending more still that we would, that we would owe.
Well, we're spending new money. Now, bear in mind, there's still a TIF five. So let's say this TIF doesn't move forward. We already tried the extension of TIF five, and that didn't make it. So, but we still have TIF five in place. If this TIF does not move forward till six, then presumably, and undoubtedly, at least by its completion today, the Childean project goes away. But that doesn't mean we can't get another project down the road. I'm not hopeful that would be the case. It certainly won't be the case anytime soon. I don't think it would be the case with respect to the scope and grandeur of this project. And, you know, it's really going to rely, I think, on this project moving forward, and that's predicated on the TIF being adopted. And we can't do that tomorrow. We have to have the joint review board, we have to have the public hearing, you know, all that has to take place over the course of a prescribed timeframe in the statute, which gets us out to late fall.
Anyone else on the phone want to chime in?
Dan, I have a question.
Joe?
In, in the event the city did terminate for reasons within the city's control, and there were reimbursement costs that went to cover the costs of those drawings, who owns the intellectual property, the city or the developer?
We would have no problem conveying that intellectual property to the city.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to chime in?
Just to, Dan, if I can, just to summarize, if we don't do this, and we wait to get confirmation on TIF and vote and all of that, what is the different date of shovel to shovel versus whether we say we'll take the risk, or whether we say we won't take the risk?
Between, the number of months between now and November, it would basically set it behind, because it's going to take days.
So it's a three month difference, but that, does that affect anything seasonally?
Yeah.
Does that three months turn into six months, or what are those dates?
It, and I've heard Chris say, end of November, Thanksgiving, which is end of November, so if it's December 1 that it gets approved, it's, to me, it's that three to four months that you're, that we would be losing on being able to get the shovel in the ground, that period of time.
What I'm saying is, would you get shovel in the ground December 1, or are you still waiting till March, so there's really no advantage?
We have to draw the drawings. If we started drawing the drawings now, and we got the review, if you approved the TIF, the final ball drops on the 16th, or on, in December, we would start right away. We did all the concrete work down in Oswego through the winter months of the, of the foundation. So we, it's not seasonal. It's really just the period of drawing those drawings.
Gotcha.
That you're gaining.
And it's a three month period.
Correct. Three to, three to four months. Heaven forbid, if this goes to January, then it's even a little bit longer, so.
So that's the question. I mean, Dan, you said it bluntly to him, like, "Oh, you're not willing to take that risk, are we willing to take that risk?"
And we have to, we have to decide on that tonight.
Right.
So is, is it a deal breaker for you if we delay the project?
No, no, the, we're fine.
Is it a courtesy to us to get this thing built faster?
We'd like to do that. My disadvantage that's out there is, the lender has to wait three to four, five months longer, and do we lose the lender? That's one of the things that.
If you have a lender, we should probably move forward.
That's, that's the, typically, when you have a lender, you, you start, you go. You, you don't wait.
If the drawings part is not a deal breaker, is the sales tax rebate a deal breaker for you? As in, you do not want to move forward if we don't give that to you tonight?
The, the sales tax is really not coming to me.
I understand.
And, and so it's, it, I can say it's a, you know, it's not a deal breaker, but then when there's empty retail down there, that's, that's why I'm asking for that, is for that tenant to get that, to entice them to come in.
Right. The reason I say that is, I don't think that belongs part of the RDA. If our economic development department determines that you have empty storefronts, and we want to use that tool separately, we should be able to do that. Putting in the RDA does not have a lot of teeth. It doesn't.
It just makes sure that the tools and the tool built for us, versus if we don't get approval later on, and somebody, you know, we.
Understood.
I want to make sure that we're upfront with all of the issues going on, and that one of the issues with that retail is trying to, is trying to fill it, so.
But it would be on us, then, to still negotiate that with the individual tenants, is what I was getting at. And that's outside the RDA. It's a philosophy.
Yes.
Right. The tool, the tool doesn't go away just because we don't.
Tool does not go away because we don't include the RDA. It makes it a stronger argument, though, that we're giving some sort of commitment. I don't think six months is enough. I think, I think you'll fill them in the first month, I really do. But I'm open to suggestion. Does anyone want to chime in on this, this particular issue?
I, I think, I think us not filling those shops is a, is a detriment to us, the city. It would, it would only benefit us to fill those shops. So us sitting back and just letting them sit empty, like, we would go out and try and fill those shops. I, I don't, I don't think it needs to be in there, because I feel like our staff and our team would put our foot forward, running, to put people in those shops. It only helps us tax-wise and the look of our town.
I don't, and I don't think it helps us tell the story any stronger either, when we're trying to sell this to residents that that piece is in there. That definitely raised the red flags.
Nick?
Yeah, I would disagree. I mean, it's not incumbent upon us. Every experience I've had, of course, I'm not Walmart or anything, but the landlord has given incentives because they want that rented out. So it's not just benefiting us. It does benefit us. It more benefits him. So it should be more incumbent upon him to give the incentive. We're already given $16 million, and everything we just keep giving, I think this is something that shouldn't be in the RDA. If it comes down to, and there's somebody that's attractive.
We'll talk.
We've got 23 years. Different vendors are going to be coming, different councils are going to be coming, different variables are going to be around. It shouldn't be in the RDA.
You're uncomfortable with the optics as well?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else? Anybody on the phone?
Yeah, this is Tony here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I agree with Nick on that. The loss of revenue by not renting it has transferred to us by having to absorb that. You know, if they're not being able to fill the space, you know, they'd rather us take a loss in our revenue, because that's why we're filling them, so we can have some revenue. Then they can keep the rent at the same rate, and say, "Well, we'll see about getting these incentives." I, I couldn't believe, to be honest, if my job dropped when I read this, this memo, on both the, us assuming the risk, it's about possible $500,000 in plans. If it doesn't go through, I'm feeling pressured for future votes. If we agreed to that, and the sales tax, I get, my constituents are going to be furious if we do this.
I would just say that, to the point that many have made, sales tax rebates to incentivize a business to sign a long-term lease is something that is a typical economic incentive that is used to attract those types of businesses, versus, you know, because I love insurance agencies, but they, you know, aren't creating a lot of revenue, versus someplace that is a store or a restaurant that is generating those types of consumption taxes for us.
Would that sales tax incentive be your opening approach to, to a potential renter? Would that be the first thing, "Hey, come to this building, because I can get you this"? That sounds to me like, as the negotiations on price and length of a contract are going on, that's one of the later tools you'd pull out, not something upfront. Why have that loaded, so that everybody coming in knows upfront they're automatically getting that concession before the negotiations even start?
We'd, I guess we'd like to make sure that we have the tool, that it's there. Do we open up negotiations to say, "We're going to get you a sales tax rebate"? No.
If it's in the RDA, and I'm coming to rent that storefront, yes. You're starting the negotiations with that, because I already know you've got that, you've already got that in your back pocket, so put that on the table the first minute of the meeting. And that, I think, is a disadvantage to the city.
I think what I've heard expressed here tonight is that, but for a few, that there seems to be unanimous support for the use of that as an incentive in the appropriate situation. But that perhaps seeing it there in black and white in the RDA means, "I'm going to sit back and wait until that six month period of time, before I even get in there." So we, we definitely have a willingness to offer those types of incentives if there are those vacancies there, to have those discussions and try to incentivize those.
I would fully support incentivizing if it was for the right tenant, but I certainly don't think that you lead with that. And I certainly don't think that you tell the town that that's another thing we're giving you, because that's the perception. That's all.
Dan?
Marty?
You had mentioned Walmart got the sales tax incentive. What year was that?
Your Honor?
2004 Walmart.
And don't they?
It's never been used.
As I say, don't they have a fondue for like some improvements for the, the streetlights there as well, and?
No, it's when they get to a certain.
Right, a certain sales level.
Certain, and they have not reached that sales level yet.
Right.
We got them to.
And what other entities have we used that incentive for?
Wish Peggy was here, but I think Marty is asking, who else have we used the sales tax incentive for? It certainly has been part of the discussion for other development opportunities, but I don't think that we have any other sales tax rebates.
We offered it to Art Van.
Art Van? No. Actually, we did not use it for Art Van.
Well, we didn't use. We discussed it, but we didn't, we didn't agree to it.
Exactly.
We used it as an incentive out in Randall Road to get.
Laura, this is Peggy.
Oh, Peggy, Peggy.
Main and Randall, and at Wilson and Randall, that was a sales tax.
You need to use the mic.
That was a sales tax incentive at Main and Randall, and Wilson and Randall that paid for the traffic signals and the widening of the intersections. Then we did one with Menards, I believe it was, and Target at McKee in Randall. And then we did one also at Mill and, that was a whole new traffic signal they put in. And then when Walmart came in, there was a deal that somebody had to come up with $3 million on that property to help pay for the widening of that intersection, and do all the changes that were put in place out there. And so there, there's been a lot of, you know, come see, come saw with that whole thing over the years, but we've, it's always, we've always been able to pay it. And the only one that has not collected is Walmart, and then that one had a, a cap on it, that they had to sell so much merchandise as, within a given year, and then they would get beyond that certain, I think it was $800,000 maybe, or something. And they've never done that, so we haven't paid them anything, as far as I remember.
Peggy, anything that you'd like to add?
The mayor covered, covered them all, except we also had Amstead before Berkeley's was there. They had a small incentive. And we have paid Walmart some, and it's, it was open-ended, so if their sales increased, we could pay more on that one. I think we paid them about $300,000 so far of a $1.5 million retail tax rebate.
Laura, I, I think the bottom line is that the city, through its home law authority, can offer sales tax reimbursement as an incentive. Typically, when it's offered, it's because it's a very desirable retailer or restaurant, it's based on sales, anticipated sales, size of the store, but in any case, it's also accompanied by some kind of pro forma, that says, "In order for this incentive to be granted, you have to prove enough. You have to prove up the fact that, but for the incentive, the economic investment on investment for the retailer isn't worth." So why would you take that out, whether it's in the RDA or not, you've got the authority of the home law on a case-by-case basis to look at a sales tax reimbursement plan.
And Chris, to your point, I'm saying that's why you separate them, is because we have the authority anyways, we don't need to include in an RDA that we have that authority, which we might use for the right retailer. It's, I feel like, when I read the memo first, I felt like it sent the wrong message to codify that. It made me uncomfortable when I read it.
Dan? And I'm not, I'm not arguing that it, I'm getting a little off the reservation here. I'm not arguing that it's the end, that there's an insistence. I'm not arguing that it's in, that there's an insistence that it be in the RDA or not. All I'm saying is that it's a tool that is at your disposal through state law. And, you know, I wouldn't, and I think any retailer knows that, whether it's in the RDA or not, the retailer knows, hey, well, I'm going to ask for a sales tax incentive. Or the developer, it can be granted to the developer also, delta offset the cost associated with a retailer that wants to pay less than market rent, or less than the rent that is due for the space in question.
Sure. Marty?
Dan, yeah, and that was why I was asking the questions for it. I do not think it should be in there. We have not been using it. Why would we put it in this one? And when it was used, it's been used in the past. It hasn't been used recently. We have to look to what we're doing today. We're in the face of declining sales tax revenue. And to even give that up at a later date, that's a no.
But Marty, you would use it as a tool if you thought
Yeah.
that it was appropriate.
Right. Because we have
I'm saying for in this RDA, it should not be in there.
Sure. And I'm saying outside the RDA, the temperature I was getting in the room here is that people were generally in favor of the tool. That's all.
That would be a discussion for a later date.
For sure, okay. I'm not trading votes over the phone. Anybody want to make a motion? Anyone have any additional discussion? Anyone else on the phone want to say anything? If not.
Well, can we clarify exactly?
I want to clarify. Yeah, I was just about to say. Do we want to make an amended motion without the sales tax incentive included in the RDA?
I'll move.
Because that's how I'll vote for it, is if we remove it.
So neither of those two provisions are part of the RDA right now. So I'd kind of suggest a motion a little bit the opposite of that, that it is the RDA, but to add a provision that allows the developer to recover the costs of doing the construction drawings prior to the establishment of the TIF.
Okay.
Before we do that, can I ask a question just for clarification? I know there was a question with re-Tiffing and the recovery of all our costs. Has that been confirmed, or is there a way to put that in there that that's?
There is not. It's just that no precedence exists. So there isn't anything in the TIF Act that would preclude us from seeking reimbursements of those costs if additional increments exist beyond what is needed to pay off the bond debt. So we will be, we feel that we have a legal basis to make that argument. It's just that there, it's not anything that has been, it's not clear in the TIF Act itself, nor has it been tested. There's just no legal precedence.
Then what would it take to add in there that in the slight chance that we go to court and are challenged, and we don't, that is, those expenses are covered by the SSA?
Because they're our expenses, we don't cover a lot in the RDA about what we're going to reimburse ourselves for. The RDA is more about what the developer is entitled to in terms of the redevelopment plan. So nothing in here would be like a promise to pay ourselves something.
No, I'm looking for a promise for him to pay, like for those properties. If we're not able to reimburse ourselves through the TIF, which was the initial intent, and I assume we're going to, but in that 2% chance that we can't and we're challenged, how do we cover ourselves and have that reimbursed to us?
I guess it would go to the financial analysis and to see where the return on investment, what happens to the return on investment when you take $2 million away from it.
Yeah, I think what you're asking to be done is to add to more, $2 million more of costs to be paid, and whether those are paid by additional increment over the $16 million repayment of the bonds. And if that's not done, then it has to be paid by the SSA. Those costs, I'm seeing those costs are sliding. All you're doing is sliding them under my responsibility to pay, which is going to increase my cost to $2 million, which is going to change my financial pro forma significantly.
Well, it really shouldn't because those costs were included since day one. So now we're not
Not as developer costs. So when he goes to his lender, and the lender looks at the potential for future liability on the project, that's going to be something that they will analyze as, you know, it has changed now.
Yeah, those $2 million were never being paid by me. They were being paid by you if there's additional increment after the $16 million.
And then how does that differ from the expense? What, we had a backstop with the SSA. What were those expenses covering?
So in the event that
The bond.
In the event the increment doesn't pay the $16 million of bond repayment, then I'm guaranteeing you that I'm going to repay it. And if I don't pay it through the increment, then you'll give me a verbal ask or an email ask for me to pay it. And if I don't pay it then, then it goes into the SSA and it has to be paid. So I'm guaranteeing the repayment of that $16 million.
Of the bond, but not the expenses above and beyond.
That's correct.
And I don't believe we could use the SSA for that. We would probably have to change the language of the SSA in order to do that.
Well, okay. I bring it up because I'm not comfortable saying yes if we don't know. If, I want a backstop for the city because that's $2 million additional to us today that we weren't going to pay yesterday. Again, another $2 million that comes onto this project that I think we'll get it back is the answer I'm getting, but we're not sure. And I'm not comfortable with that. So I was just looking for ways to
You know, I'm hoping that we have been conservative in our estimates of the value of the private investments so that we know, the very confident thing that we know is that we'll be able to pay the bond payments. But by estimating it conservatively like that, our hope is that there will be that additional increment. And what our TIF council has told us is that, you know, there's nothing in the TIF Act that prevents us from applying that additional increment to the property acquisition because it lists under there that a reimbursable cost is the property acquisition. And that's all it says. So we acquired the property. So under the TIF Act, that should be a TIF reimbursable cost.
Laura, can I quickly ask Peggy a question?
Yes.
Peggy, the money that we spent on the properties up to that point, just roughly the $2 million that's out there already in other soft costs, did that come out of our other TIFs, or was that out of the general fund?
They were out of the other TIFs.
They were out of the other TIFs. So we didn't spend money out of anything but the TIFs already on this. So the money that's there was reimbursed by another TIF that we've spent already on these properties. That's why we never included that in the bond issue or the financials of paying ourselves back. Because if we're paying ourselves back, we're moving that money into the other TIFs that it came from. So realize that that's one of the reasons why the SSA was created to make sure that what's ever generated from the property, whatever comes into the TIF, the new TIF, would be enough to pay back the bonds. If it's not, the SSA covers that. The other money that we spent for property acquisition and everything else came out of another TIF. So it's not like you're reimbursing the general fund for that money.
Okay, no, I get your point. That's a good point. I still don't get it.
I get where you're going, is you want to know that what we've already laid out on the table to buy these properties, somehow we get that back.
Right.
And realize that money was generated by other TIFs.
Which TIFs were those generated by Peggy?
I would have to answer that.
TIF 1.
TIF 1.
Which is contiguous.
Yeah, the contiguous TIF.
That's correct.
That's also what paid for River Street and
Dan?
Yeah, actually, I'll mark here real quick.
Yeah, this is a different topic, but with the, if we're going to take the risk on starting the drawings right now, and that's on us if this fails at some point, I'd like to know why the, to complete the project went from 36 months to 42 months? And we're giving you that extra time for drawings and everything? And I just don't know why we gave six more months in the RDA.
I know what you're talking about.
It's on page 30.
What page?
30.
30. And Scott's on the line, too. I can remember, this was part of cleaning this up. There were two different provisions that conflicted. And when we went back, and many of the things that are done are dependent upon, they're contingent upon something else when something else happened, right? And so I believe it was a miscalculation of that time period that we had thought that it was 18 months, and then it's 18 months and additional two years. So that's 42 months, not 36 months.
We were looking at some of the dates that, that's why we had to put the additional six months in there because the dates on several different things crossed, I guess, is what I recall.
But I guess the date is, we're issuing a permit, we're done at that point, right? And it's all on Jodyne to build it within 36 months, and we extended it to 42.
I can look into it and get a better answer for you.
We all agreed on 36 months.
I just don't know it off the top of my head. I knew, so it's, you know, the drawings are here, and it takes this long to review this, and then there is the notice to proceed, and then there is the transfer of the property.
But this sounds like, you have a permit to build.
So, oh, you know what? I am guessing that, you know, before, the time period did not include the remainder of the demolition and the environmental remediation. Because we had previously been responsible for providing them with a clean site, and they were going to begin all of their excavation. And when the environmental issue came up, we decided that rather than mobilize two separate crews, that we were going to have the developer, we're going to transfer the property earlier so that they could just mobilize one crew to complete the demolition, and then also excavate that part that was the remediation. So that would probably attest for that because, and that crosses over, right? Because ordinarily, we weren't going to give them the property title until all of that was done.
That makes sense.
I would agree with that.
Anybody else?
Dan?
Marty?
My point was along the lines of, I understand where Nick was coming with in the discussing of the property repayment, et cetera. Because that was a huge selling point when we were presenting this to the community that the costs, this project will pay for itself and all of the costs involved. And I think I am picking up on Nick's apprehension that we've moved from a, hey, this was a guarantee, this is a good point, to, God, we hope.
No.
It feels stronger than that?
Yeah, it's not at all. I mean, someone would have to legally challenge it. So I don't know who is going to legally challenge our ability to do that to our detriment.
To pay ourselves back, fund, or pay ourselves back expenses that we have previously paid ourselves back where there is precedent for to do that. I get it. And I just, I feel like we had a memo, and I was looking for it. I can't find it. That we're way in the weeds here on this. And I'm not as uncomfortable as other people are.
Yeah, I can send out the memo.
Kevin's got his opinion.
The lawyer's opinion.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
So move.
We have to make an amended motion.
No, the amended motion will be that we, ordinance 20-51, authorizing execution of the third amended and restated redevelopment agreement for one Washington place, including the repayment to the developer for costs associated with the drawings if the city does not approve the TIF.
Perfect.
Got it. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Just one extra question.
Sure.
If I may, but this doesn't include the retail, the incentive?
Are you making an amendment?
I'm not. I'm asking what this amendment is.
It does not. Staff gave it
It's in there.
It's in the memo.
It's in the memo, but it's not part of it.
It's something that we could discuss. We discussed both items and agreed that the, we would like this project to start. And that's why the amendment to let them go forward with the drawings.
Alderman Serrano, is your question, are these two provisions in the RDA currently?
Correct.
They are not. Neither one is in the RDA. And so the motion is to authorize execution of the RDA and add the first bullet point, but not the second bullet point.
Because that's what it says. I'm reading right from the memo. There are two requests from the developers that should be discussed, and if agreed upon, should be memorialized in the RDA.
For sure.
So we're only putting one in the RDA.
I apologize doing this, but it just came to my mind. Can I ask another question? Is there any way to put in there what our expectations are regarding the closure of River Street and/or State Street?
That is in there.
Not in the RDA.
Road closures are in the RDA.
It says they have to have approval and
and that it should be kept to an absolute minimum.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You know what? Nick makes a good point. I haven't said a whole lot. Dave, you understand what our concerns are on River Street. What is your concern?
I do. I understand the concern, and I believe that we want to be good stewards of the community, the immediate community right around there. And to Mike's point earlier, our construction workers, and I think somebody else had mentioned it, are going to be using, whether it's restaurants, the bars, et cetera. So we are going to become spending dollars in those establishments. So can I stand here and say, "No, we're never going to have to close River Street"? No, I can't say that. There are going to be some points in time that we're going to have some issues. But do I want the tenants to survive around the building? Absolutely. Am I going to cooperate with them and help them? Yes. I can tell you, one that down in Oswego, that the tenants did not, the existing tenants really didn't take up with us. It was a suggestion of who would provide lunch. And two construction workers. And none of the businesses got on that bandwagon, and I'm anti-roach coach. I don't want a roach coach pulling up onto the project. Turns out, nobody wanted to participate in that. So the construction workers went out and found a restaurant locally, and there's somebody that delivers 45 lunches every day to the project. So 45 lunches, that's a good selling feature. So somebody is benefiting. So we want to cooperate with the existing tenants. We're going to try to minimize any impacts to them. And that's about as far as I can, I can agree with that. I can't agree that we're never going to close the street.
You know what? I do this every day, okay, in construction. And on a project I had, when we had to close, close the whole street down on the streetscape in Old Park. And when we had to block entrances to a building, to a hair salon, this is my expectations, because this is what I've done. I had a laborer who was 6'4" and pretty well-built. And when women had to get across, we built bridges to get people into the buildings, actual foot bridges, okay? When the foot bridge was no longer workable, that we had to remove it. This guy's job was to lift the women and bring them into the store so they wouldn't close. they wouldn't close. And that is, it's a God's honest truth. And that's the expectation I would have, that, not that you have people lifting people, but, men lifting people, but that you go the extra mile. I mean, can you say that's?
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we have that. Our, our biggest complaint down in Oswego, we've been down there a, a year, and we're in the middle of downtown, is the flashing red light on the crane was a little bit too bright. And, uh, that, that, to me, is not that big of an issue that we can't, can't overcome. Uh, so, yeah, we, we, we want to cooperate with everybody. We will cooperate with, with everybody, and we will do our, our best.
For everyone's reference, it's, uh, section one point oh seven on page, the bottom of page twelve, which is disruption of public use or public property.
Abby?
Good.
Can I ask a TIF question, having never gone through the TIF process before? So we're saying that this, you know, this'll, we're saying we'll pay for this, the drawings, if the TIF doesn't go through. The joint review board is non-binding.
That's correct.
So if they come back and say, no, we don't approve this, then we'll still, we'll still know in the back of our heads that we've got five hundred thousand dollars potentially, or cost up to that point, which is only a couple months.
To, to your point, someone on the phone mentioned that we are binding ourselves to a yes vote on the TIF tonight.
That's.
Or it's a very.
That's not necessarily true.
It's a very expensive no.
It's a very expensive no, but the joint review board could bring up a concern to you that is worth that.
Only a couple months worth of, you know, well, I guess it only takes a couple months, if they're saying three months is, you know, to draw, through the drawings.
It is.
It could be five hundred thousand dollars, that worth.
Up, up to, up to. It is an expensive no. It is, it is something to think about.
It's a risk.
Dan?
Marty?
Question along those lines is, if the joint review board says no, is it a simple majority, or is it two-thirds?
I will get the answer for you.
For the city council?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yes, there's, there's a, they can make a recommendation against it, advisory, but if they do recommend against it, it will require a two-majority vote of the council. I don't remember if it's two-thirds or three-quarters, though. Scott, you remember?
No, I don't, I don't remember the exact number. I, I, I wanna say it's two-thirds, but don't quote me on that.
We can't deliver that vote. Not tonight.
That's why I bring that up.
Well, I, I, I think one of the votes I heard tonight with respect for new TIF was, uh, I'm in favor of the new TIF, but I'm not in favor of the project. Um, I'd like to think that they can be inclusive. You can vote for a new TIF even though you may be opposed to the project. I mean, it still creates an opportunity for some other projects down the road, and gives you twenty-three years to do it, and you include thirty parcels instead of three parcels. So the new TIF can be considered on its own merit as a good idea or a bad idea. Uh, so I, I, it's not fair to tie a redevelopment plan and program and the adoption of TIF to how you feel about this project necessarily. Now, I'm not so naive to think that they're not connected. Obviously, they are. But please don't, um, take a, a vote in your, even in your mind on the new TIF until after the public hearing. I mean, you got the joint review board, then you got a public hearing, which gives all of the interested parties and anyone else, uh, an opportunity for input into the TIF adoption. So I, I don't, it'd be disingenuous to say, okay, well, we're into the TIF now. Otherwise, you know, they could start construction Tuesday, you know, that being procedures, but we still go through that process. It's very strictly prescribed through statutes, and we don't want to truncheon that.
And the point is, is that we're not saying we're tying our vote to the TIF, but we are tying ourselves to five hundred thousand dollars that we have no guarantees on.
Right, we've shifted the risk.
Correct.
Dan?
Sir?
Tony here.
Yep.
Um, yeah, I'm really uncomfortable about this. This project's been going for four years, has been all these things that come up and derail us. Um, and we're gonna risk a half million dollars to get this project going three months sooner, uh, six months, or, I, I just think, you know, the, the, the money budget probably, that, that is money that will come out of our pockets now, that will come out of the budget now, and not, not a, a revenue in twenty-two years, but an expense in the current, next year's budget.
It won't get, Peggy's still on the line. It is still a soft cost that is, uh, TIF reimbursable, and so we would look to the adjacent TIFs to, uh, cover the cost, not the general fund.
That, that's correct.
I could think of a lot of better ways to spend that money.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Is it a deal breaker if we don't include this, and we withdraw the amendment, and you break ground three months later? Because, uh, it sounds like we're pretty uncomfortable with this part.
No, it's not a deal breaker, but again, it, we're saying three months. I, I believe.
You think it's longer than that?
I think it's gonna be four to five months.
We have an eight to six vote tonight. We cannot deliver a supermajority like that. We can't.
Dan, can, I mean, is this something we can revisit after joint review board, after we get more, you know, and it, we could limit it to only a two-month delay, or a one-month delay, or a three-month delay? We're not locking in a six-month delay. But to include that today, you're gonna lose, I think.
Any, any point in time, we can pull the trigger and, and start.
Right. And we just gotta guarantee it at that time.
Correct.
What do you think?
Okay, looks like I'm gonna change my motion.
You're gonna withdraw your motion then?
I'm gonna withdraw what I had, and I'm gonna go back and restate that I move that we recommend to council ordinance twenty dash fifty-one, authorizing execution of the third amended and restated redevelopment agreement for One Washington Place, not including either one of the two bullet points requested by the developer.
Can you just reiterate those two bu- bullet points for the record?
Sure, let me find them. Uh, the developer is willing to begin construction drawings immediately upon approval of the RDA, as long as the cost of doing so will be reimbursable to the developer in the event the city council does not adopt the new TIF, or otherwise terminates the agreement unless termination is for reasons outside the city's control. The second bullet point reads, the developer is requesting some form of sales tax abatement for the retail space. Staff recommends that there be some time within which these spaces are marketed without an incentive, such as six months after certificate of occupancy. That further recommends minimum lease term to qualify for the incentive. So neither one of those will be included in my motion.
Thank you. Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malay?
No.
Uwer?
No.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Nah?
No.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Baron?
Aye.
Motion carried, eight to six.
Okay. And moving on to item number ten, resolution twenty dash ninety-seven dash R, a resolution expressing official intent regarding certain expenditures to be reimbursed from the special tax allocation fund from proceeds of an obligation issued, if any, or other sources from such fund in connection with proposed tax increment financing district, commonly described as the Near East Downtown Redevelopment Project Area.
Twenty twenty plan. This is a very procedural issue. This is basically putting all, all the public and, uh, taxing bodies on notice, uh, that monies, uh, we will be spending from inside the TIF are, are things that we are considering a reimbursable, uh, payment. So is there any additional discussion on that? Otherwise, I would make a motion that we approve that resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? A roll call, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malay?
No.
Uwer?
No.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Nah?
No.
Motion carried, eight, six.
Okay. Next up is item number eleven, a presentation on the TIF redevelopment plan and program.
Uh, Chris Easton is going to, uh, do this presentation.
Laura, is my slideshow on the screen?
Yes, it is.
Chris, can, can you speak up a little bit? I know they usually don't hear that, but we can barely hear you. Are you, are you calling in on the party line?
Yes.
Yeah.
Your, your connection, your connection is different than the others. That will make this, this presentation difficult.
Do you want me to go through the, uh, computer instead?
Uh, Chris, I will, uh, give me a minute, and I will call you. If you, uh, hang up two nine oh one, I'll call you back.
I'll hang up.
Okay. I'll put it on this phone.
Thank you.
Takes a while for my phone to recognize me in a mask.
Just, this, this is too long of a presentation to not be able to hear him. Besides, we deliver eight to six when we can hear people, so.
Try again.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, my, better.
Little bit.
Hold on. I hear it all the way up.
Okay.
Okay?
I think that's better.
Okay, I'll try to speak clearly and directly into the phone.
That's better.
And I know you've been here for a long time, so I will, uh, provide this hopefully in, in quick time. Um, I guess what I'm gonna do tonight is remind you of how we got to the point where we're at. I'm gonna provide the summary of the findings of the redevelopment plan and program documents. I'm gonna provide the objectives of the redevelopment plan and program, uh, outline land use plan to include uses and the phasing schedule, and then let you know what lies ahead as we go through on the process of trying to adopt the new TIF six. What you see on the screen in the project area, you'll remember it from the feasibility study. It's comprised of thirty parcels. It's about twelve and a quarter acres in size. And just so you know, the certified EAV for two thousand and nineteen of the subject redevelopment areas were about one point four million dollars. And you'll recall, the last time we met in June, I presented the feasibility study findings. Uh, in order to designate a TIF district and, and to create the plan and program in advance of doing so, you need to meet certain standards, uh, set forth in the act. The first and foremost is a conservation area. You have to prove at least fifty percent of the structures are at least thirty-five years old. In our case, we had about eighty-seven and a half percent of all the structures, and ninety-three percent of the principal buildings meet that criteria, criterion. Uh, you now have to meet another three additional factors set forth in the act. In our case, we met four, um, with respect to deterioration of existing structures and surface improvement. There was, and what I mean to say by meeting them, you don't have to find every parcel, every building would fit into that condition, but they have, these factors have to exist in a meaningful extent, and are reasonably distributed throughout the project area, in terms that are key and are right in the statute itself. So again, to a reasonable, to a meaningful extent, and reasonably distributed, you met the deterioration factor, you met that structure don't meet minimum code, there's proven lack of community planning, and that with respect to EAV, you have to be, one of these two, uh, has declined three of the last five years. That's the district itself. For three of the last five years, the EAV has declined, or that EAV over the district has lagged behind the remainder of the community for four, for three of the last five years. In our case, there was four of the last five years with respect to that factor. The program, um, findings are essentially that, um, but based on building permit history and, uh, over the last couple decades, and trending development and lack thereof, that one should not reasonably expect an area to be developed consistent with the city's plans and policies, uh, without adoption of the plan. The area is just generally not been subject to growth. Uh, you also have to prove up, and we did, that the redevelopment plan conforms to the city's comprehensive plan. Also, there is a criteria in the Conservation Area TIF statute, that if there is a displacement plan of ten or more existing housing units, or if there's at least seventy-five existing housing units within the redevelopment area, housing stu- housing impact study must be completed. Uh, our findings are that no such study is required, and finally, that the plan is, is written, and, uh, the relevant phasing is such that it shouldn't, the redevelopment of the plan implementation shouldn't be completed within twenty-three years. There are certain objectives, obviously, within a plan, uh, and all these are consistent with our existing comprehensive plan, but first of all, we want to encourage higher density residential projects, such as the downtown business district. Uh, we want to encourage mixed-use residential slash commercial development, such as infilling and utili- and, um, redevelopment on utilized properties. Uh, we want to see more Main Street, or State, Main Street, Wilson Street, uh, three-level building spaces for commercial enterprises. We want to be able to address the deterioration that we found in the building stock and the surface improvement. Uh, we want to look at, hopefully, while doing so, uh, keeping, uh, conscious of our preservation goals. Uh, we're trying to encourage remodeling projects over demolition. Uh, we want to make sure that any such projects are con- consistent and conformant with our existing land development regulations. Uh, we want to coordinate land use and transportation planning. Um, the last three objectives listed were, uh, we want enhanced marketability of our vacant unutilized properties, uh, create a safe and effective for that environment, and encourage public and private partnership. With respect to land use in the redevelopment project area, the entire redevelopment project area is generally planned to be mixed-use with respect to building occupancy. So we're looking at commercial type uses on the ground floor, retail restaurant office services, and on above two-level floors, we're talking about residential. Now, the land use plan, although it doesn't have differentiation concerning use, again, all commercial residential mixed use, it does separate out different subareas related to density of residential use. So, uh, as you can see on this map that's on the screen, there are one air, there is one area, the One Washington Place, where maximum density is ninety dwelling units per acre. The OWP plan, as you just approved today, that is consistent with that density. The next level down are the properties located along East Wilson Street, from South River to, to include the two oh six, the former Marathon Gas Station, at the southeast corner of South Washington, East Wilson. We're looking at, uh, forty-five dwelling units per acre for that area, maximum. And then the remaining area within the redevelopment project area, we're maximizing density for residential uses at thirty dwelling units per acre. The redevelopment plan also contains place for phasing for redevelopment. Uh, we got the map, kind of, well, the picture was a thousand words, but you can tell that the first and foremost phase that would occur within the first five years is One Washington Place. Second phase, we expect to be the two oh six, former Marathon Gas Station site. The third phase is kind of in the, separating into four different type of phases, or four different phases. The first one, we're, we're just calling Phase Three, involves two of the parcels that are presently vacant that we bought from Larson Becker on the east side of River Street. The next phase, within Phase Three, we're calling three, Phase Three A One. The next phase within Phase Three, we're calling Phase 3A1. That's the center of the hard corner, the northeast corner of North River Street and State Street. Although that's probably a primarily developed property, and one might think we should target that for an earlier phasing, it does involve multiple property owners, so we expect that that may be prolonged. Where in the case of Phase Three, the city-owned properties on North River at 118 and 124. City-owned those, we have a veteran ability, obviously, to convert those into redevelopment opportunities. Phase 3A2, that's the old Domino's building and the adjacent former Furniture Galley's building. Those are actually two buildings that won parcels. We expect that to develop next. And that's still within the first ten years of the redevelopment project. And then finally, the city property at the northeast corner, I'm sorry, the northeast corner of Spring and North River Street is a small parcel that the city owns, where we demolished the building back in 2007. Phase Four is out on East Wilson Street. And then runs to the very furthest east of the redevelopment project area where we intersect with North and Duran Street. That is primarily the Folto's properties. The largest piece is kind of L-shaped or maybe P-shaped, is however you describe it. Then the next property immediately east of that beacon piece is also by Folto's. And then finally, the corner property, Teddy Corner from the Berkeley Shopping Center, which is owned by another party. We think that that's a good opportunity to put all that land together and create a redevelopment site there in and of itself. The final phase, Phase Five, would be at the southeast corner of South River Street and East Wilson. Right now, that's the art stop parking lot presently used by, presently used by the boardwalk lot. To give an idea what the build-out conditions would be, here's the potential build-out values. So for Phase One, One Washington Place, you know what that is. That's the 186 dwelling unit on sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty square foot of commercial. All the other phases are estimates based on about what we think is a reasonable amount of square feet of commercial space that would be viable and rentable. And then taking about ninety percent of maximum density per given site for the square feet of site. So without going through all of them, they're in front of you, you can see where we've got our numbers. So we're looking at, you know, at full build-out. And that's ambitious, but we should plan for maximum build-out. Whether it occurs or not, it gives you a better idea of what potential EAV you could have. And then your backdoor cost then. So you could have as many as three hundred and fifty units, including the 186 that is being approved tonight. You could have, you know, three hundred and fifty units within the downtown and another fifty-two thousand square feet of commercial. If this did occur, and if it occurred in about the timeframe we're estimating from the previous slide, if you look at the phases in the fifth year would occur, and then you apply a three percent real estate market value annual increase, by the time you're 2044, you're having nearly forty-eight million dollars in EAV within the new redevelopment agreement, or rather redevelopment area. That's against the 1.4 million that was certified for 2019. So finally, what we're doing moving forward, you just adopted the inducement resolution, which basically says, or stated, you are putting people on notice, including tax bodies, that you expect, or you may very well spend some money, or at least commit money, including obligations, in this case bonds, that will be paid out of the TIF fund. In advance of these obligations, or these commitments, or even expenditures would occur because of this resolution, that could occur and still be reimbursed even before the TIF is done designated. That's what that inducement resolution just said. You have two more ordinances you need to adopt in very short order. The first one is setting the date and time of the public hearing and to convene the joint review board. Another ordinance will establish an interested party registry. Thereafter, you publish notice requesting alternative proposals that's required by law. You convene the joint review board. Again, we expect it to occur mid-fall, maybe September timeframe. Or I'm sorry, the joint review board will probably be later. Provide the public notice to conduct the public hearing. The public hearing, we think, will occur around the end of October. And then finally, and we may wait till after the first January to do this, we have to approve the ordinances that create the TIF. You approve, approve the redevelopment plan and program. That's the document that was sent out, which includes the feasibility study as an exhibit. You adopt that income and financing, and you also establish a TIF six system. So I know I went through that kind of quickly. The document is, you have it in hand. It's written according to HOIL, and in basically template, based on statutory requirement. It has been reviewed by our TIF attorney. And that's where we're at. So are there any questions?
Anybody?
Hello?
Alan. Go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, thanks for the explanation on the staging of the proposals. I believe that was one of the misinformation pieces that was put out, was that the city is advocating for this spot, this spot, this spot with specific developments. We are not.
Yeah, I'm not sure I heard that much. I think what I heard someone ask is that, are we indicating specific projects? What the plan does is outline potential redevelopment opportunities that were based on the phasing we provided. Now, there are other parcels that will no doubt redevelop, or at least be small-scale redevelopment, like remodeling or rehab that'll occur. But what we did is pointing out nine opportunities through the phasing schedule. They're either single or aggregated parcels that are large enough that would provide an opportunity for a fairly wholesale redevelopment. When it comes to the alternative proposal, we only have one proposal at hand right now. And that is the One Washington Place. But anybody could provide a proposal indicating a different redevelopment opportunity.
Correct, no, it was just that the information was out there that a couple residents that I know of were panicked that there were seven high-rises being voted on tonight.
No, there are not seven high-rises being voted on tonight. This is our plan.
No, I know, and that's where it has to be said clearly.
Definitely, thank you for making that clarification.
Anyone else?
Can people hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead. Can't tell who that was.
I think it's Chris, oh, Chris's microphone is on on here. I just muted him on the, yeah, go ahead, Chris.
That's not working for me yet.
Yes, we can hear you, Chris.
Okay. So I wasn't able to hear the question. Could someone give it to me again?
So the question was that there was a lot amongst the misinformation that was being spread out there was that this, what you have presented is we are proposing that these specific types of developments, we're approving those to be built tonight. As opposed to what this is, is a study of what the potential would be for justifying, establishing this TIF district, that certain elements exist here. And based on the available properties that are there for development, we could foresee that maybe someone might propose something like this.
Sure, I mean, it's just like a land use plan. You know, you adopt a comprehensive land use plan, you indicate what you're amenable to, what makes sense. And then when you slap zoning on top of it, that provides some entitlement as well as some restrictions. So that's sort of the purpose of the redevelopment plan, is to talk about what could be. And you need to estimate what your EAV will be, so you know what part of the program. It's a plan and a program. The program aspect of it is, how are you going to be trying to redevelop the site and generate tax increment? That's what the tax increment financing fund, the allocation fund is about, adding increments into the fund. When you know about what you have in the fund, you can better estimate what you can take on as cost. So except for the One Washington Place, we really don't have real detailed plans, and in some cases, no plans, for these projects, these opportunity sites. So our plan, this document you've got in front of you, simply says, this is kind of a what-if scenario under this type of land use, building occupancy, and under this kind of residential density. In some cases, our estimates associated with commercial square feet were based on how is this gonna park itself? And in other cases, it's how much commercial area is really viable. You know, I guess you could plan for 200,000 square feet of commercial. But, you know, that would be unrealistic and to some extent, lack credibility in the plan.
Exactly. Okay.
But no, we're not, the plan doesn't indicate we're approving this project. And if something comes up that says, hey Craig Folto's, or Jesse Properties, Jesse Properties owns the 206 Marathon, or the old Marathon building, 206 East Wilson. And he comes in and he has a project that only has twelve residential units and, you know, 2,500 square feet of commercial. It's permitted under zoning. It's not absolutely consistent with the build-out plan. It's a proposal, and if it makes sense to the council, you can approve it. But you still approve it under the same way whether there was a TIF there or not.
Right.
Unless they're asking for money, of course, or incentive. But if, in either case, you approve the development on its own merit, does it meet the plan? Does it go through and get approvals for site design, for architecture, for zoning? It doesn't change your authority at all on that. You still oversee the development process on a property-by-property basis, notwithstanding with zoning this plan.
Okay. And this is just a presentation, so, Chris, we're not asking for anybody to take a vote on anything tonight, correct?
No, what this is, is for us to have a document that the council has deemed, and then now stick it through the process.
Right.
Through the JRB, through the public hearing. Maybe the next time you see this plan will be after it's gone through those processes. And for your consideration, in advance of adopting the ordinance.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we will move on to...
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
We will move on to item number 12, Resolution 20-99-R, approving a contract with EX2 Technologies for the design engineering of communication shelter at the Paramount Substation for an amount not to exceed $30,351.31. Alderman O'Brien?
So with the Northeastern Paramount Substation, we have to rebuild the Paramount Substation. Paramount Substation is being shared with the fiber optic. We have seven cables of fiber optic because the fiber optic was servicing only our electric utility. Over the course of a few years, our electric, fiber optic has been expanding and it's servicing other clients. And since we're gonna rebuild this Paramount Substation, staff thought it was a good idea to separate the fiber optic from the electric utility. So we, this here before us is just asking us to build a new housing for the fiber optic utility that is expanding. That's pretty much it. And then there's a couple of things in here, some technical things, telling us about shutdowns. You know, if we get this done, they'll do the shutdowns in the evening for the fiber optic. And the fiber optic is completed, then we'll be able to at all leisure do the Paramount Substation reconstruction. And so for the $30,000, $30,351.31, we're looking to do EX Technology to do the work and cancel our task order that we have with...
PSC, Power System Engineering.
Yes, so that pretty much, I think, sums it up.
Yep.
So anybody have any questions or concerns or observations?
My usual question. How much was in the budget and is this within budgeted amount?
So this was already authorized, or similar task was already authorized for $30,000. So it's all budgeted, $30,000 was budgeted already.
Okay.
In the budget, so it's $351 more. So we have enough money available because a lot of projects that we plan are not going forward due to the COVID and slowing down overall in the construction.
If I don't ask my normal question, people think I'm not paying attention.
Oh, you?
You're paying attention?
I'm always paying attention.
So I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Do we have a master service agreement with EX squared?
We have.
We do, okay.
I believe they used to be called something else, and then they changed their name to, or they marched with somebody else and become EX Square. So I have added, this is the first task order as task order one.
Right.
So we already have a master service.
Okay. Also, the additional cost, not a big deal, but the reason we're doing, going with them is because they can also build it.
Yes.
And so it's kind of a design build, but they still have to be lowest qualified bidder, correct?
They actually provided, to be fair, they actually provided a cost to be the design build guy. And we staff rejected it because we said, we don't want you to build it. We want you to bid on it separately and become the lowest bidder. So we rejected that. It's a revised proposal that you are looking at only for design engineering.
And so one last thing, there was commissioning that was delayed, why is that?
So there are some parts that were missing when the switchgear was shipped. There were some parts missing. You don't find that until you hook up everything and you go through the testing. And remember, council approves Siemens to do the testing. And during the testing, we found that some of the items were missing. So we have reached out to the vendor to ship us those parts. And once we get the parts, we'll put everything together and then go through the final testing again. So end of this month is the final testing being scheduled at this time.
For all the commissioning?
For the commissioning of the Northwest Substation.
Anybody else have anything? Anybody care to make a motion?
Second?
Moved by Miller, second by Chanzet. We'll do a voice vote.
Roll call. You have to do a roll call.
Do a roll call.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knott?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron absent, and McFadden?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Probably put that on consent agenda.
Yeah, we can put that one on consent.
Thank you.
Next up is item number 13, Resolution 20-100-R, approving a contract with Sergeant Lundee for design and construction engineering services of thirty-four KV per acre replacements at the northeast, southeast, and main substation for the amount not to exceed $309,862.
This is, this is, there's a lot to this, but we... This is, this is, there's a lot to this, but we have already purchased the breakers. There's, there's a couple of things in here. I'm just going to have you take it, Rahat, so I don't have to repeat it, and then you repeat it. So I'll let you just take it all, but I have a number of questions behind it.
Okay. So council last month, I believe it's last month, or yeah, last month, I think, approved with Siemens to purchase 11 breakers. So that was about $350,000. Now that we are going to get the breakers, it's not a plug-and-play. You can't just take out the old breakers and put the new breakers in. The breakers have changed over the years, so they have become bigger or different sizes. So we have to modify our foundation to fit in these new breakers. So you're kind of seeing it a little late because we have gone and back and forth with Siemens and also with this consultant to discuss how we can use the existing foundation so that we are not ripping it out. Ripping it out sounds pretty easy from, coming from a civil engineering standpoint and putting a new one in, but you also have to have electricity going on throughout the city. So we kind of looking at options at buying or manufacturing some kind of adapter plates which will go on the existing foundation and the breakers will sit on it. So this proposal actually has some of those things built into that. Siemens is also looking at it independently, how, or some kind of adapter plates. The consultant has some hours built in, which is quite a bit, to design those adapter plates. So we talked to the consultant quite a bit. We were surprised by the number of hours that they proposed to do the adapter plates. I'll be honest about that. So this is a not-to-exceed contract, which means that they will just bill us only for the hours that they are going to spend on the project. So we are pursuing both the opportunity with Siemens and also with the consultant. Our preference is to go with Siemens. If Siemens are the manufacturer of the breakers itself, if they can manufacture those adapter plates, then we will only use the consultant to review those adapter plates, not design it. So the number of hours that you are seeing from the consultant will go down considerably. I mean, it's quite a bit of hours if they were going to design it. So that's one part of it, and it's not, again, as I said, and I don't come from the electrical background, I'm like, it's breakers, you take it out, put it back, you know, what's so difficult? Gary and I, we were talking about it. And it's, there is more to it, you know, like you have to do the wire design, you have to do all the controls design, you know, there is like, lot of these things go behind the scene, which, you know, Gary and I didn't see, but we obviously have Bob and Moose, who are pretty knowledgeable about electrical system design. So we picked their brain and we said, you know, does it look reasonable to you guys? They said, yeah, it does look reasonable. So the numbers shocked us, I'll be honest. So we went back and forth with the consultant. We are in agreement, it's a not-to-exceed contract, which means they will bill us as they spend the hours. They will not bill us for anything they don't spend. So we have asked them that they have to provide their time shifts to make sure. The amount is to design, first of all, do all those controls and everything for the breakers, and also do a bid document for the contractor to come in, put in the plates, sequencing all that, that which feeder they will take out the breakers first, which one they will replace and all that. So there is this whole construction document that you have to produce for a contractor to look at and bid on it to really do the construction portion of it. So it's to design, all those, and then also during the construction, we are kind of lean stuff, you know, that we have, actually at this point, we have only one electrical engineer other than me managing the electrical engineer and the projects. Moose has been promoted to become the operation manager, but he's still wearing two hats. He's still helping out on the engineering side, and he's also managing the operation side of it. So we don't have people, or we don't have qualified people to oversee the construction of all this, taking, replacing the breakers. So Sergeant and Lundey, they are going to provide that construction engineering through this proposal too. And again, it's as needed basis, they are not going to be there all the time if the contractor has any question. I believe Sergeant Lundey has an office in Warrenville, so pretty close by, so they will show up, and then again, charge us for the hours that they are going to spend. So it's for design and construction engineering portion of it. Obviously, there will be another contract coming in when we bid it out, for the contractor to come and build all that. So it's for that proposal.
Any questions, concerns with anyone? So you answered my own question, Rahat, regarding why we didn't buy the same size breakers.
Yeah, it doesn't come in the same size, you know, it's, it's the same type of corolla if you buy 20 years ago, and now it's different size, I guess.
And so it's a safety deal also because of the Coronas involved, because the mechanisms we were able to solve that issue was just the Coronas involved that became a safety issue that we're doing this.
Yes.
And this is only for construction engineering, this is not for construction. Construction will be in 2021, and that'll be another, you'll come before us one more time.
So those are the things we kind of talked about. There may be a window of opportunity in December or November, I would say. If we can get the bid out, get the bids back in, and council approves it, there may be a little window in November when the contractor may come in and do just the main sub, because in main sub, we have to put a new foundation in. So there may be a window of opportunity there to do, to put that in, but most of it will happen probably in early 2021.
And one last question, the commissioning at the Northeast Distribution Substation was delayed also, why is that?
That's the same thing that I, we talked about.
At the Paramount, it's the same thing, because they have, they mentioned here, COVID was part of the delay.
No, no, that's the same thing, you know, COVID, because, you know, there were some parts missing for the switchgear, and we reached out to the vendor, and they didn't have all their people working, so they, you know, rather than taking usual four to eight weeks, they're now taking eight to 12 weeks to give us all those parts.
I laugh because everything gets blamed on COVID. Whenever there's a delay, COVID.
I'm not sure, but I say that everything is at half the speed, except the construction. But even construction, like we had our weekly meeting at Main Street today. He was talking about, you know, getting some structures, and he said they go to this vendor, trying to remember the name, and normally he gets it in two days, now he's like three weeks behind, you know? Not sure, is it like a lot of construction going on, or he doesn't have enough people to build it? So everything is half the speed, as I say, you know, things, materials are not easy to find.
Right.
So...
Anyone care to make a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Knob, second by Chanzet. Roll call vote, please.
Knob?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley? Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone absent, McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Resoto?
Aye.
Handback?
Aye.
Motion carried, 13 to 0.
Probably consent agenda.
I'd be okay with consent if you want on that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rahat.
Thanks for hanging in there, Rahat.
Yes, thank you, Rahat.
You have 30, Laura?
Rahat, how much sleep have you had in the last two days?
Laura, you have 38 seconds for project status? I want to be done by 11:00.
I have an important question that I would like to ask because many residents contacted the city today due to the widespread damage caused by these storms, to ask if we were going to do an additional brush collection. Ordinarily, when we have events like this, let's say a flooding incident, it affects one particular section of our city. Based upon what we have seen, I got 65 text messages yesterday for callouts, it is widespread and throughout the city. Scott Haynes estimates that doing an additional brush collection is probably, and he's just estimating the cost, between $30,000 and $35,000 to do that additional brush collection. So I would ask if you want us to move forward with that. I could poll all of you, and based upon that response, if it's unanimous or near unanimous, that we could do that as, like an, we have this thing where we can do an emergency repair type of thing if we need to, and get that approved at the next city council meeting, which is Monday. I'm just wondering how people feel about that. It's a lot of money. There will be a brush pickup in September, so we could just have it laying in the parkways for the next few weeks, but otherwise, we would be spending $35,000.
Yeah, me driving around... That I saw yesterday were just unreal, and that's just in my own neighborhood and in my ward. A lot of people didn't have enough room to put everything in the parkways, so it's blocking sidewalks. I tried to stop and tell people to make sure they didn't get in the streets because a lot of it, just dragging the stuff over, they were blocking streets and drain grates and everything else. So I think we need to do this, and I think we need to figure out, we have to figure out where it comes from, we have to figure that out, but I can't imagine leaving this stuff out there for a month.
Yeah, I mean, even going out, even a couple hours after the storm and seeing how much people had already taken out to the curb, yeah, it's...
And there's still a lot of damage to be brought.
Yeah.
Is there anyone participating in this meeting this evening that is opposed to spending up to $35,000 for an additional brush collection?
Can I? Can we just do a bunch of bonfires?
Don't go there.
Is there any chance to move the brush collection up a month?
We just had one this month.
Yeah, we just had it, the last, like last week and this week, where the brush collections, August 3rd and August 10th, as luck would have it.
I thought it was the end of the month.
Sadly, no. Checked it this morning.
Because we took a month off.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know we didn't do it in July, right?
It was the first two weeks. I believe that's what was on the website.
Yes.
Yes, was the West Side already completed before the storm this day?
Yes, so all brush was to be out at the curb.
On Monday.
By Monday at 7:00 a.m.
So it was all picked up and then, just to be billed directly?
I know, I know. And the last thing that I would like to say is, I'd be completely remiss today if I didn't call out the extraordinary efforts of all the departments of the city, really. When we heard that the storm was coming in and it had this special designation, a PDS storm, that it was really going to be a significant event, we sent nonessential employees home at 1:00 p.m. because we didn't know if they were going to be able to get home after this storm blew through. But the Public Works, multiple departments within Public Works, the Police Department, my goodness, those people, and the Records Department, you can imagine the number of phone calls that they had to field, and then to dispatch out all of the on-call personnel. 100% of our electric crew worked 16 hours to try to restore power, and then those events lasted into this morning, we had some additional transformers that blew out on the East Side, so they had to keep working on those. And when you read newspaper articles about ComEd customers, that there's still tens of thousands of people without power, and that it might not be restored until Saturday, it makes me incredibly grateful that we've got this awesome team that we have here. And so I just want to say a big thank you to everyone.
I got visited this afternoon by an insurance adjuster for one of the big companies, and he was telling me the word amongst the group was, is that there was well over a million dollars in damage done and been taken yesterday. We had several houses that had trees into them and in the windows, a lot of roof damage, and there's just a lot of stuff. He says he added all up, he says, I bet we'll have over a million dollars here. And I don't know, I'm just like, Laura, I've had the whole day wanting to know, you're going to give us a brush, please give us a brush pickup, because that's, everybody's got the same problem going.
Hey Laura, to your point with the electric utility also.
Yes.
Is, you know, we lost power for maybe five minutes.
Yeah.
You know, my wife was like, if we had ComEd, we'd be without power for a few days.
Right.
And that is kudos to our electric utility, and it's a selling point we have for all industry, industrial users, is, you know...
And the partnership, the street crew is out there helping to get the tree out of the way so that the linemen can get in there and fix the lines. I think they're really, a lot of times, unsung heroes.
Absolutely.
Alderman Wolf has neighbors to the south of him that I don't think they still have their electricity back on.
Right, and that's where...
McKinley and...
My backyard borders the township area, and that's all ComEd in there, and when the trees came down, they took down the ComEd lines. Thankfully, in the neighborhood, majority of the lines are all underground in my neighborhood where it really took some heavy damage.
Yeah.
I mean, from my house west out to Millview, pretty much a direct line towards your house. And then halfway through, in between us, there was hail all over our backyard, which I saw nowhere else in any pictures or anywhere where I was yesterday.
There was a report of a hanging tornado over Ingstrom.
Right, somebody on Main Street turned around, you know, that was the report I saw, was that they turned around right in the middle of Main Street because they saw this thing hanging out over the top of that corner at the end of Millview. Pretty amazing what it took down.
It went right across the river and did a bunch over, on Pine Street, near Alderman Baron's house, and your neighborhood took a lot of damage too over there.
Yeah, we were out of power for over 12 hours, and then we had flickering all morning.
Yeah, if you made a rumor on it, it looked like there was some kind of a straight line event that came in right just about over the West Side Fire Station, and then just went southwest or southeast through Batavia and did a lot of damage on both the east and the west sides in that straight line. Walnut, Morton, Pine Street.
South Jefferson had it.
South Jefferson, South Van Buren had some pretty good damage. There was a lot of that, it was, it was south of Wilson Street largely, but north of Wilson Street, there was a lot of trees down too, but nothing like to the south.
Yeah, Woodland Hills was really bad this morning.
Right.
You know, a bit debris all over the place.
That was, but the intensity on the south side was bigger and better than the north side. Alderman Wolf, I think you were in the, right in the smack dab center of it.
Yeah, it's very strange. I told a bunch of people, I've already, I want to get my drone out and get up above the neighborhood and see if I can see the real path, because when I stand up in the back corner of my house and look to the southwest, all I see is a big gaping hole through what were trees, you know, to the southwest, there's nothing left there.
Alderman Miller, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I still see in my notes here now, I've got, so my ward was, brush pickup was starting on August 10th on the west side of town. I know it doesn't help with the east side, because I was just, I was just wondering about, my neighbor's brush has been out there for a couple of weeks now, and it's still there, so they must now just be starting on the west side of town.
Yeah, that's possible. I've got a...
That's what I was going to ask.
...by us, too.
I was going to ask, if we already had brush pickup, I was like, I know a bunch of people whose brush has been sitting out there for a couple of weeks, so...
Yes, yes.
Okay. So really, we might, we're really only talking about the east side of town needing an extra brush pickup?
Possibly, I'll look into it.
Okay.
What I hear from you guys is, it is what it is. Whatever we got to do to get that brush picked up, we'll get it picked up.
Yeah.
And then you take them longer on the west side?
Yes.
Because of this now.
Right.
Because of this.
Right.
And realize that there's a lot of trees that are broken.
And still hanging.
Down yet, haven't been done yet, so that's still going to be another brush.
Yes.
That happens. Anything else? I just have one other that I wanted to mention, and I know it's really late tonight, but I want to say that, I don't know if everybody saw this, but up on Batavia Avenue and Wilson Street, the clock is working again. There was an email, I think we all got this week, from one of our residents who's still struggling with unemployment as a result of COVID and stay home and jobs disappearing, asking questions about utility payment and payment plans. I got, I thought we had a reply from her. She said that she didn't even ask yet, so she was venting before she even asked for help. And that's what I was wondering, I thought we had something in place that would take care of that and help with that situation.
We do.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Sure.
I should have copied you, I'm sorry.
Okay. I move we adjourn.
Second. Meeting adjourned. Oh yeah, first we're going to vote. All in favor?
For the gift.
Aye.
Aye.
No.